Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? All right, I'd like to welcome everyone. I'm pretty sure many of you is for the first time here, so we're glad you've made the trip over and hope everyone feels welcome here tonight. We call the roll, please.
Farmer?
Here.
Henning?
Here.
Here.
Gorman?
Here.
Merkel?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Bachman?
Here.
And Stevens?
Here.
Okay, the first items, two items on our agenda are public hearings. The first is, has to do with the adult use cannabis and the second is a zoning change, zoning district change. I want to kind of run over, explain how these meetings work just so we're consistent and we, at every public hearing, we read these rules, so it just takes a minute. So, how this will go is our staff, Clayton's staff, will present the case. I'll ask the applicant if they would like to make a presentation or have anything to add. I will ask council members if they have questions for staff or the applicant. I will ask for a motion to open the floor to public comments. I will then ask for any public comments in favor or opposition of the application. Be advised, you will not be able to defer your time to a speaker who's already spoken this evening. Our council rules are three minutes. That's a kind of a common timeframe, I think, for councils. So that's what we have also. I'll ask for a motion to close the floor to public comment. I will ask the applicant if they would like to respond to any of the public comments. I will ask her if there are any further questions or discussion among council members. I will ask for a motion to recommend approval, approval with conditions, or disapproval to the applicant's request. And lastly, I will ask for a motion to close the public hearing. At this time, I want, think about this for a second. If you signed the paper out there that you want to speak or even if you think that you might want to speak, you need to take an oath of office because you'll be, you'll be up here at the podium and it'll be on the record. So if you think you might want to speak tonight, please stand up now and raise your right hand.
I'm sorry, may I separate that out? Because we're going to have to have two public hearings that are separate. Can we do just adult use swearing in first and when the second item comes up, there will be a second item, please?
You heard Martina. Thank you. This is pretty simple stuff. And the crowd went down quite a bit. So afterwards, after repeating the oath, you just say "I do" and then you'll be duly sworn in. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give to this council is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, please say "I do."
I do.
Okay. Thank you, you're duly sworn in. And we'll go through the same oath on the second public hearing also. Okay, and I'm going to turn it at this time over to Ellen Snyder to present the case.
Good meeting, Council. This is in regards to adult use cannabis. Planning Commission held a public hearing and meeting on November 25th, 2024.
I knew we should have had a flip chart.
There it goes. I hope it's me. Yes, it's me. Ohio legalization of marijuana background, medical marijuana. May of 2016, the Ohio General Assembly approved legislation which legalized marijuana for medical purposes. Ohio's medical marijuana law, or OMM law, became effective September 8th, 2016, codified at Ohio Revised Code, ORC 3796. ORC 3796.29 states, "The legislative authority of a municipal corporation may adopt an ordinance to prohibit or limit the number of cultivators, processors, or retail dispensaries licensed under this chapter within the municipal corporation." Clayton did not opt to prohibit or limit the number of cultivators, processors, or retail dispensaries licensed under this chapter. City of Clayton and medical marijuana permitted in certain zoning districts. Medical marijuana cultivation, processing, and dispensaries is permitted in CMX, CMI zoning districts. Medical marijuana processing and dispensaries is permitted in MSD zoning district. Medical marijuana cultivation is defined as "A facility that has been issued a certificate of operation by the Ohio Department of Commerce to grow, harvest, package, and transport medical marijuana as permitted under Chapter 3796 of the Ohio Revised Code." Medical marijuana dispensary is defined as "A building or structure licensed by the State Board of Pharmacy as a medical marijuana retail dispensary." Medical marijuana processing is defined as "A facility that has been issued a certificate of operation by the Ohio Department of Commerce to manufacture medical marijuana products." City of Clayton, current medical marijuana cultivators, processors, and dispensers, dispensaries, cultivators, we do not have any dispensaries, we do not have any, and processors, we do have one. It's Main Street Health, LLC. On July 5th, 2024, they were awarded a provisional dual-use license by the Ohio Division of Cannabis Control, or DCC. They have not been awarded, they have not yet been awarded a certificate of operation for dual use which would permit Main Street Health to begin processing adult-use cannabis in addition to the medical cannabis it currently processes. Adult-use cannabis, or recreational use. Issue two, on the November 7th, 2023 ballot, legalizing adult-use cannabis in Ohio, was approved by 57% of voters. In Clayton, 3,177 voters were cast in favor of legalizing adult-use cannabis and 2,313 votes were cast against the legalization of adult-use cannabis. Adult-use cannabis has been codified at ORC Chapter 3780. Similar to the medical marijuana statute, the adult-use cannabis statute contains a provision which permits political subdivisions to restrict or prohibit adult-use cannabis within its jurisdictional limits. And then underneath of that is the specific language in ORC. And just to note, adult-use cannabis operator is defined as, means a Level 1 adult-use cultivator, a Level 2 adult-use cultivator, a Level 3 adult-use cultivator, an adult-use processor, and an adult-use dispensary. Tax information. Ohio imposes a special 10% tax on the sale of adult-use cannabis, plus the fixed state sales tax of 5.75% and local variable sales tax percentages. The adult-use cannabis statute is silent with respect to the allocation of revenue from the 5.75% tax and the local sales tax, but the statute provides that all funds collected from the special 10% tax will be deposited into the adult-use tax fund. Monies will be distributed from that fund on a quarterly basis. 36% goes to the Cannabis Social Equity and Jobs Fund. 36% goes to the Host Community Fund to be used for the benefit of municipal corporations and townships for any approved purpose. Distributions from this fund shall be based on the percentage of adult-use tax which is attributable to each municipal corporation or township. And the next couple of slides break this down a little bit further. 25% goes to Substance Abuse and Addiction Fund to help alleviate substance abuse and 3% goes to the Division of Cannabis Control and Tax Commissioner Fund to support the operation of the DCC and to defray costs of the Department of Taxation related to the administration of the adult-use cannabis tax. ORC 3780.23.C, point 2, states, "Unless otherwise authorized under this chapter or rule, the Director of Budget and Management shall transfer amounts to each fund as follows: to 36% to the Host Community Cannabis Fund for the benefit of municipal corporations or townships that have adult-use dispensaries and the municipal corporations or townships may use such funds for any approved purpose. Distributions to municipal corporations or townships shall be based on the percentage of adult-use tax attributable to each municipal corporation or township." And just as, as an example, a city with five dispensaries and those five dispensaries generate sales totaling $10 million. $10 million times 10% is $1 million. $1 million times 36% is $360,000 and that would mean the city would receive $360,000. Ohio adult-use cannabis sales. Adult-use cannabis sales began in Ohio on August 6th, 2024. As of September 21st, 2024, adult-use cannabis sales exceed $76 million. As of September 30th, 2024, there are 124 dual-use dispensaries in Ohio, which means that they can sell medical and adult-use cannabis. Columbus has 13, Cincinnati has 10, Dayton has 6, and Cleveland has 5. As of September 30th, 2024, there are over 100 local cities and townships with moratoriums to prohibit adult-use cannabis. More specific to our jurisdiction, Clayton moratorium. City Council adopted Resolution R 122372 on December 18th, 2023, and Resolution R 52431 on May 16th, 2024, enacting a moratorium on adult-use cannabis so that further research and analysis could occur. On September 5th, 2024, City Council adopted Resolution R 92448, extending the moratorium until September 5th, 2025, such that the issue of adult-use cannabis in Clayton could be submitted to the Clayton Planning Commission for recommendation to council. Per Clayton Codified Ordinance 1141.03, the Planning Commission is tasked with review of proposed amendments to the zoning code, which means text and/or map amendments, and make recommendations to council. Inglewood's adult-use cannabis. On September 24th, 2024, the City of Inglewood enacted Ordinance Number 24-11, limiting the number of adult-use cannabis operators within its jurisdictional limits to no more than one. And their specific language says, "An ordinance limiting the number of adult-use cannabis operators within the city limits to no more than one adult-use cannabis dispensaries." And there's a link there to that page. This is the text that Inglewood has and their actual ordinance. There was three alternatives presented to Planning Commission. They opted for the third alternative, which was to allow adult-use cannabis in the same zoning districts as medical marijuana is currently allowed, but limit the number permitted. Staff interpreted this alternative to include adding designations as permitted or conditional as it relates to non-residential districts and specific zoning districts within that and then possibly adding facility or use standards to generate applicable regulations. So it was proposed to add adult-use cannabis dispensary as a permitted use under the use tables, which would be under retail and I believe that is manufacturing on the right-hand side, which would be cultivation and processing. And then in specific zoning districts, CMX, adding this to the retail and industrial use tables as permitted uses. Adding these designations as permitted uses in the CMI use table. And then just adding dispensary and processing for the MSD use table. We would add parking space count table, again, under retail and industrial for cultivation, processing, and dispensary. And these are the same regulations for medical marijuana. And then adding definitions to the glossary of terms and proposing that the definition for adult-use cannabis cultivation, meaning the same as adult-use cultivator per Ohio Revised Code and same for cannabis dispensary and cannabis processing. And then in the generally applicable regulations, this is where special provisions like halfway house standards or short-term rentals are defined. Planning Commission made a recommendation to add this as its own section and the text that would be therein would have a purpose, applicability, and operation. Planning Commission recommends this suggested revision to Clayton Codified Ordinance 1141.11C. Staff recommends this suggested revision to Planning Commission at the November 25th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting. Planning Commission motioned to recommend the revision to council at that same meeting. And if council agrees, it will have two readings of an ordinance to make the recommended revision to Clayton Codified Ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Council, is there any questions or comments on the presentation?
I do have some.
Go ahead.
If Inglewood agreed to one dispensary, how did we figure six were good for Clayton?
So Planning Commission didn't recommend six dispensaries. They recommended two. So it was a total of six operations, combined cultivators, processors, and dispensaries, with no more than two being dispensaries.
Okay. Thing I would say are votes cast in favor of the use of cannabis. We can't say that that's individuals also agreeing that dispensaries should be within the city. So votes cast are individuals saying they believe it should be legal and home grow and usage should be allowed. I would say, I thought it was interesting that Kettering and Troy both had passed their bans here locally, with Kettering's being this past Tuesday and Troy's last week. Both would allow for home gross and use, but they would ban the recreational dispensaries within the city. So those are my thoughts for where we are right now.
The one question I have is that in terms of the designated locations, potentially where this could be put in place. And while the medical marijuana operations can be listed in three different operational areas, I think if people look at where those locations are at, I don't think they exactly would want to have this in their backyard. Essentially, out off Haver Road, along Winger Road, along Route 49, along Hope Road, right near Hope and Winger. Another location such as that, and I don't think that's ideal locations for our community. And I think it presents a bad setup in terms of how we're trying to plan the community growth. If we're going to have something here, it should be restricted to already an area where we already have an operation essentially on Main Street, where it's already established as a use location. So I think if anything else, before things move forward, those other three, those other two designated areas should be removed from a consideration for replacement, just as a start.
The CMI and the CMX?
CMI and CMX, I believe should be removed. I do not believe the neighbors, I don't believe the neighbors in those areas actually know what might potentially be in their backyard. And I think it's only fair that we take proactive steps to not place it there without them being in favor of it.
I agree with Greg.
Anything else?
Only thing I have on this, you know, we do have one processor currently in the City of Clayton. And, you know, they don't even have a sign out there. Your processors and your cultivators, from what I understand of those are, and dispensaries as well, there is security regulations, heavy ones, that are placed upon them. So, and they're not public facilities, their dispensaries are. So I know it kind of left it broad here. I don't see any, any kind of a benefit of limiting those here. Now, if we said four or six of those, I doubt that's even going to fill up here. But I think just for the kind of the general discussion, those, with those not being public facilities, completely enclosed, completely secure, I don't see any reason of doing, you know, much of like a regulation as far as the number of those.
I don't see any reason why we wouldn't have dispensaries because if anybody wants it, Inglewood is not but next door to us. Harrison Township is next door to us and I believe that Trotwood has them too. And that's the three people that surround us. I don't know if we touch Brookville anywhere or not, but I know Brookville does not. But, and I don't see why, with the money you put up there for the tax possibility that the city could receive, we're not going to save any lives by not having a dispensary in Clayton, Ohio because in, it's been my experience since I was in school many years ago that if you want to buy marijuana, you don't have any problem at all getting it. And that was 50 years before it was made legal. And I've never put it in my mouth. So, and that's the honest God truth too. But I do know those that do it on a regular basis and some that buy it and sell it. But I don't see what a dispensary or two in Clayton is going to hurt us at all except bring in a little bit of income tax money.
I got a question. I noticed the Planning Commission recommended permitted use versus conditional. And if we wanted to go with conditional, what additional work do we need to do for that to be the case? Is that, would that serve the purpose of restricting areas? You know, I don't want one of these places popping up by a kinder care. I think that's my main concern.
Right, so if you wanted to make it a conditional use, that would require anyone who would want to apply to do sales, cultivation, or processing to go through the BZA before they could come, before they could put it in.
Thank you.
But this would just eliminate that step if you simply said no and just kept it to one area as I was suggesting. It's just not going to make them conditional for those other two regions. My other question that, this was back in the newspaper at the end of 2024. There was an article on the front page of the paper and it dealt with dispensary operations. Is there any provision within the ordinances that would prohibit drive-through?
No, so drive-throughs are only permitted in MSD and I believe it's CMX districts. And those are, the only ones that I've seen are fast-food drive-throughs. We don't have any, you know, retail drive-through spaces currently.
Yeah, but could somebody put a drive-through marijuana dispensary in?
It would depend on the zoning district for the drive-through aspect and then it would also depend on the zoning district for the permitted use.
If the rules don't totally allow it, then I'd agree with what the state is there. I think that's a possibility that if it's not happening now, it could happen in the future. So I would not rule that out.
Could we prevent it from the start?
Not if the state's going to allow it. What you could do pursuant to the legislation that's already in place is you can limit the number or you can prohibit it or you can allow. But once it goes, once they get the license from the state and they're governed by the rules that the state puts in place for them. It's not to say that you can't use your zoning because of course you can use your zoning.
Yeah, the only issue to this whole thing is the state's been dragging their feet for a long time getting things done. And it's like, we're going to make rules and regulations and the state's going to come back and shoot us in the foot. And that just doesn't seem to be fair. And so it's like, I'd like to know where the state's going with this whole mess before we really get in the mix of trying to make decisions.
Sort of piggyback on that a little too. The reason, you know, obviously, we wanted you to have the information, but the 10% tax that's referenced in there. Ellen had up the provision of the code in there that says that the cities, the municipalities currently can use their portion of that 10% that comes back to them for a quote, "any approved purpose." So I wanted to flush that out a little bit. I spoke to a person at the Department of Cannabis Control and they said, "As it's written now, our interpretation of that is as long as you, council has approved the purpose, you can use it for anything." But that could change in the future. So if they wanted to change that ORC provision to restrict how you're using that money, I think that's a possibility, that could occur. I don't know if they'll do it, but I could certainly see it as a possibility.
I know it was brought up in the Planning Commission meeting. I watched it on YouTube earlier this week. You may be able to answer that. Kind of ties in with like that possibility of a drive-through. Because I know it was mentioned on there that there was, I believe, maybe, I don't know if it's law or not, that how dispensaries work is your ID is actually checked twice and you are escorted. I mean, I kind of see that, well, you can't do that in the drive-through here. And I know that's kind of looking at things broad, but you know, that kind of defeats the purpose of any of that if you're saying there's those restrictions for security purposes and checking IDs, you know, for that. And that kind of takes away anything in dispensary that would take away from that.
But I think the drive-through would have regulations attached to that. I'm just not sure. And I don't think they're at that point from what I remember off the top of my head. But, you know, it could be a possibility.
Just kind of looking ahead in case.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
So Greg, you stated that you would be okay with it just being on the Main Street District, doing away with 111.13 and 1111.14?
If those were the designated locations for CMX and CMI, yes.
And then we would, you all would still be on board with four cultivators and two dispensaries in a 1.8-mile strip?
I, I don't think we need six of anything on Main Street. Any combination on Main Street. I mean, realistic numbers, basically. If Inglewood's got one operation going, I can't see where we would have any more than that. If this gets considered, that's the max I would just see going forward.
One cultivator and one dispensary? Because we have one cultivator already.
We have one medical marijuana processor.
Processor.
So just, just so everyone is aware, and I think it's in Ellen's slide, for medical marijuana cultivation and processing, it's permitted in both CMI and CMX. So when I was listening to Mr. Merkel, I had, and apparently I'm wrong, I was taking it as we remove the dispensaries from those two locations and permit dispensaries along Main Street. But you want to remove any?
Currently, currently, there's no listing for recreational marijuana in any of those references. And my recommendation is not add it. You know, not add to more than what we already have. So therefore, it's not even considered for those areas.
And limit it to Main Street.
Limit it to Main Street only for recreational use.
Any other questions or comments?
Other than Greg, you're going to have to make a motion to amend what they brought before us with an exact amount.
This is only public discussion part. We can do that.
Okay. Okay.
Anything else?
Well, my thing, you have to, my background of this whole thing is that, you know, my father was a pharmacist and my upbringing was always not in favor of drug use. So suddenly to be faced with making decisions on making recreational marijuana use. In my time as a student at Ohio State, rooming temporarily in an apartment where I had a drug dealer as one of my roommates was not fun. Running, you know, having to get out of the apartment before he got picked up for, got into whatever he was dealing. Once I saw what he had in his cash box, it's like, I'm getting the hell out of town. But anyway, you know, that's, that's my background. I mean, it's getting my head wrapped around trying to make things openly available for general use is a slightly foreign concept. It just makes it a little more difficult essentially to kind of, it'll be more free in discussion. But I'm trying to get an open mind about the whole thing because of, so anyway, don't hold it against me.
Just one comment I would make on it. I think, I don't know about the number of one dispensaries. I think six is a bit much to start with. Maybe we can amend that part. But this, I kind of, I don't know if I would word it But this, I kind of, I don't know if I would word it just the way Tim did, but I kind of agree with what Tim said here in that as the state moves forward with this, and I don't think we necessarily have to do everything, you know, that everyone else does. Just because Inglewood has one doesn't mean we need to have only one. I think it's, you know, probably a decent number to start with. But in my mind, you know, the way, the way that our culture, I'm not saying it's good, bad, or ugly, but the way our culture's moving, the way our state is moving forward with this, we can either get ahead of the curve or stay behind the curve. And I, you know, I guess that's, that's it for me. I mean, do we, do we just say, you know, that we're going to be a little bastion of no dispensaries? Or are we going to take advantage of what's coming our way, you know, whether we want to or not? And just like Tim said, I mean, it's really, you know, there's no walls up between any of these cities. We can drive anywhere we want. It becomes, you know, kind of a little bit of a moral question, you know? Do you want to condone the use of drugs, you know, if marijuana, you know, is considered a drug to many people or not? And, you know, so I think the biggest thing, biggest question I have is how we got to six. That seems like a lot to me, but so that's it.
So just for clarification, the Planning Commission didn't recommend six dispensaries. Planning Commission recommended a combination of six of cultivators, processors, and dispensaries with no more than two being dispensaries. So you could have four cultivators or four processors or a combination of the two, but no more than two dispensaries.
To clarify a few things here, you know, Inglewood doesn't have a dispense. They've, a few people have said Inglewood has one. They don't have any dispensary. They're just allowed one. And a question here, the difference between medical and recreational as far as like the cultivation and processing, is there differences with those? Like I know the one on, the process that we have on Main Street that is designated or said medical, is there places like that, not the dispensaries, but that are dual? Or are they ones that are strictly for medical or recreational?
It's moving now, is the 10B is the dual license. So again, harkening back to my conversation with the representative from the Ohio Department of Cannabis Control, the reason they're allowing the medicals to get the dual license is because of the amount of capital and investment that they put in. So I would, to answer your question, what I see happening is pretty much probably all those medicals are going to become duals eventually.
Okay, is there a motion to, and second, to open the floor to public comment?
Moved to open the public comment.
Motion by Mr. Henning, second by Mr. Merkel. We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Henning?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Bachman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes. So we didn't ask for specifics on the, yeah, that on here. So I'm going to say Ms. Bloom. So I want to remind everyone, three minutes, and what we're, I don't think it'll be an issue since we only have two here, but if the, in the, which I say, appreciation of everyone's time, you know, if one speaker, you know, makes a comment and your comment is exactly the same, just try to refrain from that as much as possible. You'll still have three minutes, and you know, no one's going to cut you off or anything like that. But we want that. And please direct your comments to the council. Once the floor's been closed to public comment, then we, then we're done talking about it. So once, you know, that's closed, it's closed. And again, we'll give everyone a chance that wants to speak. And when you come to the podium, if you'd state your name and address for the record. Other than that, there you go.
Mike, I apologize. My informant, who is not here this evening, told me that I had five minutes, not three. So I hope you'll give me a little bit of grace if I go over three. My name is Linda Bloom, and I live at 337 Shadywood Drive. And I come this evening to speak about the future of the city, the school district, and for families. Proudly serving this community for the past 31 years, I can tell you marijuana-related incidences have increased a lot over the last three years in adolescents. It's already far too easy for them to acquire marijuana. For this reason, I have serious concerns, and that is why I'm here to speak tonight. Allowing these types of businesses in the community will only, will only make those matters worse. Marijuana is a drug. It causes chemical changes in the brain and heavy, for heavy users of the drug. Medical science is clear about the effects of marijuana, especially the effects of use on adolescents. The risks can affect normal brain development, and excessive and frequent use is associated with hallucinating, paranoia, and a range of emotional problems and mental health issues like depression and social anxiety. Frequent users are more likely to develop long-lasting mental disorders, especially those who start using marijuana at an earlier age. In the last four years period, there was a 571% increase in ER visits due to children's exposure to cannabis products, which can lead to serious overdose effects in children. I for one am alarmed by that. It's been reported that today's marijuana is a lot more potent than what it was back in the past, like when Mr. Gorman was speaking of. Researchers conducting the study found that children who were exposed potentially had greater difficulties paying attention, planning, and controlling their impulses, and additionally, they became more aggressive. That's worrisome to me when I consider the uptick of impaired driving. Allowing these operations in the city will only increase the usage and consequently increase the problems. I know there are people out there saying that the voters approved this, and that, I know it was approved by the voters, and it wasn't a constitutional change, meaning that each jurisdiction has a duty to decide if it's going to allow these types of businesses in our community, or, and if so, how many. I have outlined just some of the concerns that schools, communities, and our state are going to have to deal with in the future. Drug addictions will lead to more societal problems and services needed by the tax, that the taxpayers will have to pay for. Welcoming these businesses into our community would send a message that would normalize drug use among our students. While we understand the economic arguments in favor of allowing these businesses into our city, we firmly believe the harmful effects and risks for far outweigh any potential gains. Our priority is and always will be the well-being and safety of our students. I welcome any further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, council. I am Debbie Poulos. I reside at 6711 Oakfield Drive. So I was going to come in here with a long list of why this isn't a good idea for Clayton. But I'm hopeful that you've all done homework and thought about this extensively because this is a big deal. I was going to talk about how arbitrary the Planning Commission's recommendations were because I watched the meetings, and I didn't feel that they were educated enough to come up with these numbers as to how many dispensaries and processors we should have. And I was also going to talk about tax dollars and that a dispensary has to do about $2 million in business to receive about $70,000 in tax benefits. The numbers that we were presented to this evening really focus on large quantities of sales. So $2 million, $70,000. But instead of talking about all of that extensively, I'm going to ask some really hard questions. Do any of you ever frequent the Flying Ace Car Wash over in Meyer? Do you ever spend any time at the DMV in the middle of the day? Have you driven down Wayne Avenue lately? It's the middle of the day, and if you go to any of those places, what you see and what you smell and what you hear are not the things that you want to see and smell and hear in our little town of Clayton. What are these people doing in the middle of the day? They're going to dispensaries, they're doing their thing, they're driving around, they're going to the car wash. It's not who we really want to be. And when you talk about limiting one to North Main, which is around the corner from my house, I drive down North Main every single day, vape shops, smoke shops, and at nighttime, we look like Las Vegas all of a sudden. We got these blinking lights, talking about smoking and vaping, and pretty soon, we'll be talking about a dispensary. So I want you to think about this really hard. Is that perceived pot of gold at the end of this legalized marijuana really worth what it will do to the city and the people that live here and who we want to be? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else that, I think that was the only two that were sworn in for that. Is there any other opponents or proponents that would like to speak concerning this? Mr. Poulos?
Well, we need to swear you in. All right. Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give to this council is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I really only have one question for the council. So when the numbers were, I'm a numbers guy. So when the numbers were portrayed up on the top, and it was five dispensaries at $2 million a dispensary, $10 million of revenue. Not that I frequent this magazine much, but the 2024 numbers just came out for dispensaries across the country. And in 2024, let me just bring this up real quick, and in 2024, two states that have had enormous amount of runway that we don't have at this point, and that would be Oregon and Colorado. The average dispensary in Oregon yields $1.2 million of sales each and every year. Colorado, $1.6 million. So when I look at $1.2 million, it's $120,000 of tax, and you guys pick up 36% of that. It's about $43,000. That's one dispensary. I'm not sure where we got $2 million from?
I'll readily admit, those numbers, the only intent of those numbers were not to give a projection as to what you, the only intent of that formula was to show how it was calculated. Because reading the statute, quite honestly, I couldn't figure out how they were calculating it. So I just called the Ohio Department of Cannabis and spoke to their attorney and said, hey, can you show me how this? And that's the example he gave me. So those numbers are related to nothing.
Yeah.
Except to show how that tax is calculated. So just, you're right. It relates to nothing as far as projections.
So the only question I really have is, at $43,200 for one dispensary, what is the amount of expense that you're going to have protecting that area and using the services that are already lean now that we have with our police officers? How are you guys going to justify that after we just passed the levy? That's the only question I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Hearing none, I'm going to ask for a motion and second to close the floor.
So moved. Second.
Motion to close the floor to public comment made by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Henning. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ellen, did you want to respond to anything or any other clarification? Anything else? Amanda or anybody, anything else? Okay.
I guess the only comment I want to make is, any decision that I make is based on what the community, is it best interest for the community? And I'm not looking this as being a dollar, something that's going to enrich the community at all as far as, you know, I'm doing this on the basis of dollars. Because I mean, I, there's more, there's a, there's a personal aspect on this that outweighs any monetary value. So for me, it's personal-wise, it's how it affects people. And that's the reason why I said, you know, I'm trying to wrap my head around this as far as how to, how to be something for what the community wants.
Anything else from council?
No, I'd just like to tell this gentleman, or you can sit over here at the table, sir, if you're tired of standing, which you well should be.
So I think the first thing would be, I'd make a motion to reject the Planning Commission's, uh, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion to close the public hearing by Mr. Henning, second by Mr. Farmer. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the public hearing is closed. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll just add that my, my struggle with this is, I know the voters approved it, but I have to step back and say, what did they really mean by that? Did they mean they wanted just people that, they can have it legal in their homes? Or did it mean that we should establish a new branch of commerce in our city? You got a wide range of options. And that's the struggle with working through this. Because I may have my biases, but I need to serve the needs of the city. So that's all I had to say.
Okay, is there a motion to approve? Approve with conditions or disapprove?
We're not there yet.
We have to wait till we get down to the actual ordinance on the agenda. So the next item would be the second public hearing.
Yes.
Sorry. That's why we have the attorney in the room. Okay, we're going to move on to the, the second public hearing. And again, I'll just go quickly through this. Ellen, again, will present the case, then we'll have the applicants, ask them if they would like to make a presentation or add anything, ask council members if they have any questions for the staff or the applicant, ask for a motion, and second to open the floor to public comment. Again, we're going to go with the three-minute timer. It's a new timer, so I'm trying to figure it out.
Do you want me to do it?
Might be better. Sorry. Sorry.
Are you starting the timer, Amanda?
That's nice. And you'll have three minutes. And again, I don't want to be too redundant. So if you could keep that in mind, that would be appreciated by, I think, everyone. And other than that? That's it? Yes. Everyone who's either signed up to speak or thinks that you might speak, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give to this council is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I hear you.
Okay, thank you. You're all duly sworn in. Okay, Ellen?
Good evening again. This is case number PC 24 dash 04. This is in regards to a request for a zoning district change from RSD to PDD and a request for a preliminary development plan. Introduction to the application. This is a two-part application, was received November 6, 2024. The proposed zoning district change is from RSD to PDD, the proposed preliminary development plan for a residential subdivision. The applicant is Mark Schnicky on behalf of SDG Warner Village LLC. The property owner is SDG Warner Village LLC. The property contains 183.1044 acres, and there are no structures present on the property. Public notice was mailed to property owners within 300 feet of the subject property on November 22, 2024, and December 23, 2024. Public notice was printed in the Eden Register Herald on December 4, 2024, and again on December 4, 2024. Location of the subject property is near the intersection of Sweet Potato Ridge Road and North Main Street. This is a map of the general location of the property. North is up, of course, and the subject property is highlighted in red here. This is the surrounding zoning of the proposed site. And everything highlighted in red, all the parcels there, those are all within 300 feet of the subject property. This is an aerial photography from 2022 of the specific site location. This is the preliminary development plan overview. It's kind of hard to tell, but there are different phases on here. And again, the preliminary development plan overview. And these were the ones that were submitted to Planning Commission. This is the updated preliminary development plan that we received after the Planning Commission's recommendation to change the plan a little bit. There was a couple noticeable changes to the top-left corner of the development plan, but largely remained the same. So this was before, and then this was again after. This is the existing water runoff routes. I kept this in here because the water runoff routes won't change, even though the primary, you know, plan changed a little bit. And I'll just flip back and forth a couple of times. This is the existing water runoffs. You can see the black arrows indicating where water currently runs off at the site, and then the proposed water runoff routes. So that's before and after, and then again, before and after. Analysis of the request for the zoning change. The current zoning of the subject property is RSD or Residential Single-Unit District. RSD zoning district outright permits 11 certain uses, and RSD zoning district conditionally permits 14 other certain uses. The proposed zoning of the subject property is PDD or Plan Development District. The PDD zoning district developments are subject to Planning Commission and City Council approval of a preliminary and final development plan. The proposed subdivision is within the Clayton Improvement District Number One Overlay or CID 1. CID number 1O standards require the zoning to be changed to PDD, and the specific text within our Planning and Zoning Code, which is 1111.22.c.1.i, states any development of land or assemblage of land within area of 5 acres- states any development of land or assemblage of land within area of five acres or more, or where more than five lots will be created, shall be developed as part of a planned development under this zoning code. The proposed subdivision is not within the Special Area One Overlay. The analysis of requests pertaining to the preliminary development plan. The summary of Warner Village subdivision proposes a construction of 529 homes, proposes approximately 68 acres or 47% open space or park, proposes three access points from Sweet Potato Ridge Road, proposes water and sewer service from the City of Union. Staff did receive Union's letter of confirmation to handle capacity. New infrastructure includes streets, sidewalks, and a multi-use path along Sweet Potato Ridge Road. The neighborhood amenities include open space, centrally located neighborhood parks, and eight retention ponds that have passive open space around them. Analysis of the request from Plan Clayton, I've kind of highlighted here with a white box and a, you know, green glow around the area that they're talking about here. The future land use plan indicates the intent of this area to be Warner Village with single-family attached, single-family homes, parks, and flex use. And this is just a kind of zoomed in version of the legend that was on the previous page. And again, the proposed area highlighted here. In other places in Plan Clayton, it was also identified as a, you know, a park or Warner Village here. And this is just more pictures and evidence that I found in Plan Clayton of what the future of this site should be. Code guidance, Chapter 1111.21 is Plan Development District. Chapter 1111.22 is Clayton Improvement District Number One Overlay. Chapter 1141.10 is zoning map or rezoning and code amendments. And Chapter 1161 is subdivisions. These chapters offer, offer guidance in respect to design and development standards. However, in Plan Development Districts, the final development standards that are recommended by Planning Commission and then approved by City Council are the effective development standards for any proposed project. Potential next steps. Planning Commission passed a motion to make a recommendation to City Council that the request be approved with certain conditions. If motioned and approved by City Council, the applicant will then be able to submit final development plans. And again, each final development plan requires public hearings by, with both Planning Commission and City Council. Final development plan and plat submission requires certain additional information not included with the preliminary plan, which is, includes but is not limited to, a completed traffic study, which will consider the impacts of the proposed development on area roads and make recommendations on road improvements to address such impacts, and development plan set, which will include details on utilities, grading, stormwater and drainage, building architecture, and landscaping. Staff recommendation. After evaluating the applicant's request, staff recommends that the Planning Commission make a motion to recommend to City Council the approval of the zoning district change from RSD to PDD and preliminary development plan with the following conditions to be met with any proposed final development plan. Staff recommended the Willow Circle be renamed, and that the applicant submits copies of correspondence of the submission of the preliminary plan to all applicable utilities and other governing agencies with their comments. And just as a reminder, they've already submitted this for the water and sewer services. And that all comments from city planners, city engineer, and city staff to be adequately addressed and complied with. Planning Commission recommendation. After evaluating the applicant's request and holding a public hearing, Planning Commission passed a motion to recommend that City Council approve the zoning district change from RSD to PDD and preliminary development plan with the following conditions to be met with any proposed final development plan. Planning Commission recommended that City Council approve the plan and adopt recommendations by staff, and also that all proposed lots shall have a minimum lot width of 60 feet. And this did adjust the original plan that Planning Commission saw at 530 homes to 529
Thank you. I'm, the, presentation. If you could state your name and address for the position for the record?
Good evening, members of council and administration. My name's Cleat Benkin. I'm a land planner and landscape architect with KZF Design. We are the land planner, working on behalf of Schnicki Development Company for this project under Matt Gaston and Mark Schnicki. We, we do work for developers. We do land planning. We help a lot of communities as well, however. We work for townships. We work for municipalities. We do land use planning. We do zoning recommendations. We do a lot of work in the arena of open space conservation and farmland preservation. So we understand, you know, what you've been wrestling with as a community over these past several years with pressure on farmland, pressure on open space. We also understand, because so many of our other municipal and township clients are dealing with the issues post-recession of a much different expectation for lifestyle among your residents and their residents than they had pre-pandemic, pre-COVID. People are working from home far more often. They're looking for home offices. They're looking for smaller yards that they don't have to spend as much time taking care of, mowing, trimming, painting. Communities are dealing with many of the things you're mentioning. You know, your, your, your Main Street district and its vitality and success, and its ability to serve the needs of your residents, appeal to the wants and needs of your residents. You have the good fortune of being in an area where you have beautiful countryside. You've got an amazing metro park near you. You've got some economic engines nearby that are creating demand for housing that will outstrip, has already outstripped the available supply in the area. So it's great to see the airport and Wright-Patt. There was a big announcement today, south of Columbus, 4,000 new jobs coming to the state. Ohio is doing well economically, but not every municipality is, not every township is. And we all, all of our clients in the municipal arena are fighting with, how do we generate enough revenue? That isn't necessarily all from property taxes. Many of these are looking to expand their commercial revenues, their retail centers, to refill them, because so many of them emptied out. So many of the storefronts along their major thoroughfares are not getting the lease rates they used to, because people are buying from Amazon or from another internet retailer. So communities like yours, and you are certainly not in the minority, are having to wrestle with growth issues. And so tonight, you're being asked to take a position on the development of 183 acres. And I would, I would like to just kind of pause for a minute on this slide and, and point out the fact that this slide bears a close resemblance to this slide. And if I may, I'd just like to point out that Warner Village is located between two developed conventional, traditional subdivisions, where the lots are rather homogeneous. They tend to be the same lot width, they tend to be the same lot depth. They tend to offer the same style of house. That houses, many of those are now over 20 years old, many are 40 to 50 years old and older. The, the builders that would be represented, should this be approved, are, are planning to offer no less than four different styles of homes and multiple floor plans within those homes. The thought being that they need to appeal to a very diverse array of buyers, many of which are already here in Clayton and Englewood and Union. Those are people that are looking for a move-down situation. They want to get out of the larger house that they've been in, and they want to move into a home that has more modern conveniences, maybe an all single-level floor plan, maybe it's, you know, on a smaller lot. Maybe they do want to still tinker in the lot, but they don't want to have as much lot. There are other buyers that want to be here that might be working at the airport, or might be at Wright-Patt, or another local employer. They tend to be, if they're younger, much younger than I, they tend to be very mobile. They tend to have lifestyles that, that are more geared toward leisure time and, and travel, and, and maybe thinking about a next job move. And so they don't necessarily want to pick their forever home, they want the home that meets their needs now. And there's a big spectrum in between that group I just described. First-time buyer and move-down buyer. And so the idea of offering multiple products is to appeal to buyers that would love to come to Clayton, love to be close to the airport, love to be within proximity to places like Wright-Patt, and would, should they come, patronize your businesses, serve on your boards and commissions, coach athletics. These are people that, that would be of means. These are not, the developer is not proposing lower-income apartments, they're not proposing something that would create a societal drain on the community. The builders that are represented are the nation's largest home builder, and Ohio, the region's largest home builder. So reputable builders that understand the market that they're in, understand the homes that they're proposing to build, and are not entering into this without a good plan, a good business plan, to see that this development is completed. So I won't rehash what's already been presented about the, the land use plan. But I did want to pause here on this slide and just talk a little bit about the reasons why my client would like you to consider and approve the development. I want to take you down to the, about the fifth bullet, bullet down there. This plan is, is, when we presented it to Planning Commission, was intended to be a conservation plan. It was intended to do everything that's described in the comp plan, in terms of prioritizing pedestrians, providing parks within a walkable radius of every home in the community. It, it's designed to be able to connect to the regional trail network that is being developed by you. I saw your active transportation plan. And I also saw that Englewood Metro Park is looking to expand the trail network regionally. It does establish a variety of residential living options. We believe it would enhance the cultural and economic vibrancy of, of your community. We also believe that the plan for compact roadways and lot development principles that, that propose a variety of lot sizes that are sized to the needs of the buyer and the, and the characteristics of the home. Imposing, I'm not saying that, that the developer would not agree to a 60-foot lot requirement, but that is not what we're doing in other communities. We are not proposing a monolithic lot size for every home in a development. Most of the ones we work with have at least five different lot sizes, so that the buyer isn't overspending for the lot. They got to build the home no matter what, but don't make them buy more land than they need if they don't want it. Okay? The other byproduct of that is, if you're trying to preserve open space, and if you're trying to, and, and provide open space on the property, smaller lots are the way to create more open space on the property you're developing, while at the same time reducing demand for properties outside of that. So if you're looking at the map and you're looking at areas to the, to the west, where you've got farmland and open space, it's going to take pressure. Approving this project takes pressure off of that land. That's not to say that you wouldn't and shouldn't be thinking about how you want to regulate development in the future. You know? Land use plans and zoning plans aren't static, they're changed all the time in reaction to, and at the request of citizens that say, yeah, every so often we do a land plan update, or we do a zoning plan update to reset, you know, the, the standards for the community. So we're, we're asking you to think about that tonight, of course, but we believe that this plan is a beneficial plan for you. There are great examples of this style of development around the region. And, they don't care, but in Merrimont, Ohio, there, here's an example of lots that vary in size. The standards for the development offer different floor plans, different faces, different garage positions. That creates a much more interesting streetscape. Why is that important? Developments that have a high percentage of open space and good streetscapes have up to 15% higher property values, and they hold their property values over time. More so than conventional neighborhoods that don't offer views facing open space and don't prioritize the quality of the streetscape. This is New Albany, Ohio. Their standards that they employed have some single-loaded streets. Why do you have single-loaded streets? It's so you can feature views to open space. And so what used to be a farm still looks like a farm, because they went to the trouble to put in a, a horse fence, you know, a three-rail fence, and there's no lot development on that. So we've done similar things with this land plan. This is South Carolina, really kind of the same thing that happened in Merrimont and is happening in New Albany, where there is a variety of product offerings in close proximity to public parks, schools, and Main Street areas. So we've already talked about this. Drainage, we'll let, we've got the civil engineer for the project here tonight, if there's any questions about the drainage. But they've, they've taken careful steps to work with property owners. Obviously, we met with residents at an open house. We heard from them at the Planning Commission meeting. And the development team is more than happy to, to make sure that drainage from the site does not become a nuisance for adjoining residents. In a little while, I'll show you a plan to buffer residents along Rankin. We heard from a lot of them at the last meeting about their concerns, about what they would see. So I'm going to show you that in a minute. So we're, we're more than willing to work with the community, more than willing to take staff's recommendation, should you approve it tonight, on additional details that would need to be worked through before a permit is issued. We have no reservation about, you know, rolling up our sleeves and, and working with you to make sure that this development is successful. When you look at this plan, and, and it's, even the new plan isn't radically different than this in terms of the open space, but you really can see the difference. You know, there, there is open space, there are open space views throughout every street. You know? So you might look at a plan view and say, that's dense. Well, it's not as dense, frankly, as what's around it. Okay? I won't get into all the house plans. Suffice it to say that if you have questions about that, we've got the people that can answer those questions. And so I'll, I'll, I'll stop here, and then I'll, and then I'll show you the, kind of the contrast between the prior plan and this plan. But I did want to highlight just a couple of points here. Again, benefits of a conservation plan. So the economic benefits, of course, we've already talked about. I, I'm not going to go into all of the enhanced quality of life stuff, you can read that. We talked about it at the Planning Commission meeting. But new residents will contribute to the economic vitality of the city and its commercial tax base through their property taxes and patronage of local businesses. This plan conserves open space, minimizes the extension of public utilities, and is placed in an area where it's not moving west, it's not the westward expansion, it's between two already developed subdivisions along an established roadway quarter. The traffic study will require that they address congestion issues that might be there through mitigation, through lane, lane, expansion. through mitigation, through lane expansion and design, best management practices, and we believe that this reduces demand for housing development in the more remote areas of Clayton. This is a rendering we did, this is to scale. This is using 3D software that allows us to model the homes in the background. So if I'm a resident on Rankin Drive and I'm standing on my lot boundary, this is showing what would happen if there was a four-foot-high mound, system of mounds that works around the back of the homes facing Rankin Drive. It shows a meadow, basically a short grass prairie, okay, planting. Those prairie grasses get about two and a half to three feet tall, okay? They would be selected so they don't look super tall, don't look super weedy, you know? It's mowed twice, once to twice a year, actually, during establishment. And then we would plant about, well, I could say on average, the developer would commit to two trees per lot back there. So, that would be a combination of evergreen trees and deciduous trees, the mounding and the grasses. And you can see the distance and the depth from the real property line to the homes in the background. The homes that are being offered would not be monolithic. There would be a variety of floor plans, styles, colors, materials on those, and you're welcome to ask the representatives from the home builders about that. This is the plan that takes those varied lot sizes and turns them all into 60-foot-wide lots. That would not be my recommendation, but it's the developer's prerogative, and he can speak to whether or not that makes sense for them or not. And these are the two plans side by side. It is expensive to provide the kinds of amenities that are listed in your comp plan. Things like parks, they require amenities to draw you to the park. They require lighting. They require features that people want to use. The original plan proposed a pool complex, perhaps some pickleball courts, an event lawn, and there were trails moving through development. It is a commitment to offer those and provide those. One of the advantages of the smaller lots is you're not building more utility runs than you need. If I only need a 55-foot lot for a 35-foot-wide home, why would I build an extra five feet of utilities for that, or an extra five feet of curb? So, there's an economic give and take with these, and typically, when you're granting that smaller lot, you're expecting in return stronger and better amenities. And the developer is in a better financial position to provide those when you grant that. So, with that, I just wanted to, again, we sell services to both sides of this issue, but our message is the same. It's not, it doesn't change because of who we're representing tonight. And I would, I believe that with the quality of the builders that you have proposing tonight, and the quality of the developer and their track record, that there is about as low a risk as you could have in approving a development with this group. Thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, sir. Was there, is there any other presentations from the, anyone else? If you'd just state your name and who you are and where you're from.
Yeah. Matthew Gaston, I'm with Chicky Development Group. Good evening, council, staff. Thank you for allowing us to present. We're excited about this project. I know, I know there's a number of questions that came out of Planning Commission. One that I just wanted to kind of address, and that was like, is there a need for this much housing in Clayton? And I think the answer is pretty clear, and it's yes. There's a great demand of housing in all of northern Dayton. I mean, there's been two, there's about 2,000 new manufacturing jobs within 10 miles of Clayton that are coming, that are, those are just the manufacturing jobs, much less everything else that's happening at the airport, and that's not to mention Wright-Patterson growing by about 1,000 employees every single year. There's a lot of demand, and Dayton has not built a lot of houses. They just started building houses again about three years ago, so there's a large shortage. And everything that's been built has been absorbed in Clayton and the Northmont area extremely quickly, like three times as fast as, yep. So I would say there's a strong economic reason, and this is not, you know, all things being equal, this is not a development that stalls out when you have reputable builders that know how to build, you know, build and sell houses. So, this is, we're very confident, we wouldn't have bought the land already if we weren't very confident in this location, so. And then one other thing that I've read multiple times is, you know, just follow the existing zoning code, which is RSD. I would love to follow RSD, but it's in your overlay district, and we are required to do a plan development district. I just think, I just want to make sure that's on, I know Ellen already said it, but, and, well.
Amanda?
It is in a plan, where it is, it is required to be a PDD based on the amount of land that it is.
Yes. So, I would, I've told staff I would be happy to follow RSD, but we are told to do a PDD, so that is what we're doing, so. If you have any questions, happy to answer them, but.
I have one comment for your group, because I'm saying this because, you know, we've, we hear a lot of the same issues whenever someone wants to build a house and/or a development. And I just want to make sure that if the studies show that traffic can't be efficient, you know, we can't do the traffic, we can't do the water, the schools can't absorb the possible students that, you know, that would come in, the rest of the environment, you know, can't support this, if any of that would come back negative, what happens then? Let's say, let's say we can't, you know, you get out there and you, you know, all of a sudden, you can't really direct the water. I mean, you can't build, you can't build if it will not be supported, is that correct? And will not build.
Yeah, there's state legislation on drainage, on making sure you don't discharge more than pre-development, and just make sure you have to detain all stormwater that leaves your property post-development to pre-development conditions. Traffic input PAC studies that make sure that you do not make anything, any traffic, you know, intersections worse than they are today, and if they do, you have to improve them, so, yeah, that's.
And then traffic studies are on your expense?
Yes, and it's.
And all the other, okay.
Yeah, that's being reviewed by the city already, so.
So, just for clarification for council, for this evening, you are only considering a preliminary plan. So, if council were to approve the preliminary plan, the developer would go back and start doing all of those studies. If those things come back, and they come back with a final plan, and they are not to council satisfaction, you can say no to the final development plan.
I just have a question here. Along most of the farm there, there is a great big ditch in front, and on the plat across the street, there is a drop lane. Do you have a plan to put a drop lane in front of these three entrances into your plat?
We'll have, I think the plan is for a left turn going west on Sweet Potato. You're going to have a left turn into the site, because that's the majority of the traffic.
Is that a drop lane?
Well, a drop lane.
I mean, everything before and after your farm is at least three lanes, and, I mean, the one.
The plat across the street has a drop lane, or what I call a drop lane, where you go off and you turn right into the plat. This way, you would be coming.
At, yeah, at each entrance, there will be three lanes.
Have you given any thought, if we put six 500 homes in this farm here, we're going to have to have a light at the end of, at Sweet Potato Ridge Road?
Correct.
And is that the city's responsibility?
No.
You're going to put the light, the stopping, I mean, red light at the end of the.
That is part of the, you know, as it gets faced.
I didn't see that anywhere in our books here, that's.
Well, it's part of the traffic study.
Correct, it'll be part of the traffic study.
Okay, is there any other questions from council?
I got a page full. Matt, how you doing?
Go Vals.
All right. Well, and probably, you probably can't answer all these questions, so feel free to reach your team, but I know, I didn't mean to get in the weeds, literally, just to start out, but I was curious about your retention ponds, that, we know there's a sheet of bedrock under there. How deep are you going to go with those ponds? And if you hit bedrock, how are you going to get the water out of there?
So, most, so along the front is where the deepest area is of soil, averaged about 10 feet, so we expect to try to stay above the bedrock with our ponds, so we shouldn't, we're not expecting to go deeper than that. And then in some of the other areas off the site, that might be a dry detention basin instead of, you know, making it bigger than it needs to be, because wet detention ponds, the wet part doesn't actually serve any detention purpose, it's just an aesthetic, and so there's no reason to make it wet, in my opinion, in the back of these sites, when it's just for functionality of controlling the stormwater. But yeah, we tried to place the ponds in the deepest areas away from bedrock.
Okay. This property has been sitting the way it is for quite a while, and I know, anecdotally at least, developers have come and gone, what desires to do there. Are you familiar with what has happened in the past and what their pitfalls were, and why will you be successful when they weren't?
So, one thing that changed, and Fisher and DR can answer this, there are more home builders than me. Well, the home builder, well, what has changed dramatically from 2019 to now is every new home, caveat, majority, vast majority of new homes before 2019 had a basement. Majority of new homes now are trying to hit a lower price point and do not have basements. When you don't have, like, this site, you can't, I mean, there's a very small area of the site that you can economically do a basements. So, you know, five years ago, somebody looks at this, they look at the Geotech report, and they say, "There's no way I'm going to dig into bedrock for 500 homes for a basement on all these houses." But when you can cluster the homes that do need a basement in areas that are deep enough to not, you know, dig out six feet of rock to put your basement in, it makes a lot of sense.
And that's because of the water table and the bedrock, both?
Well, yeah. I mean, the biggest thing was the cost of digging out of a basement, but secondary issue is a long-term issue of water intrusion.
Are you planning any blasting?
No.
Sure doesn't have to go down that far.
They got saw cutting equipment, Vals Vals, there's a lot of local contractors that have saw cutting equipment that can cut through what we have here.
All right. In your risk assessment, looking at this, were there any showstoppers you identified that, well, if we run into this, I think we're just going to have to pull up our stakes and depart?
No, I mean, well, yeah, there's plenty of things that you're concerned of, but yeah, no, it would, there wasn't anything that, you know, it would be catastrophic that, you know, make it not.
So whatever you identified, you've got a mitigating strategy?
Yeah.
For that, okay? I think one question is, I know some council members have expressed a concern, we have some plats that are incomplete, and what kind of assurances can you give us that you will complete this, that will not be what we've seen in some other neighborhoods?
I mean, I think the biggest, what should, what gives us confidence is partnering with builders that have, you know, the resources and the, you know, capacity to see a project through, and don't walk away from projects even when things slow down. There are some home builders, as soon as there's, you know, sign of trouble, it's like, "All right, well, we'll see you guys later until things calm down." But, I mean, we've worked with Fisher for over a decade now, and they're a very trusted partner, and we've worked with DR for a while as well, and, I mean, they, one of the biggest differences is both DR and Fisher, I'm speaking for you, but they will build a market home. They don't, like, you know, when things slow down, they'll build a market home to keep moving forward, not just everything has to be, you know, build the suit for a home. Right now, there's very few spec buildings going on because they're busy enough building, you know, the semi-custom homes, so.
When you talk about builders, plural, who are the builders? Who do you have in mind?
Fisher Homes.
Besides Fisher.
Well, that we only, we're only going to have two builders.
Okay, which is?
Fisher Homes and DR Horden.
Matt, could you walk us through how infrastructure will be put onto the property as you go forward in building development? What's that process?
So, which, the sewer and water is along Main Street, gas is, or, we're going to work from north to south for the most part.
Okay, and that's something you'll be doing, right? Will you, will you absorb that cost and then recoup it in the sale of your property? Or how are you hoping to do that?
The lots, yeah.
Okay. That's how it's normally done, Matt, is that right? Is that how it's normally done?
It can be, it can be done that way. Developers sometimes also request TIFs for public infrastructure.
Man, that's a nice segue into my next question. But, let's see. I know we've got several TIFs in our city, and I guess my concern is, does this, if we've got to bond ourselves, for lack of a better term, what kind of risk does that run for the city in terms of, if we have a business that comes in and very desirable to have it in our city, are we going to be overbonded to where we couldn't support that if we wanted to?
If this council were to grant a TIF for this site, it would, it would not. If there were a business that were to come into this city, odds are, we would not be tipping that property. It would probably be other economic incentives through grants through the county, or possibly we have a income tax sharing kind of agreement that we could also employ.
Matt, also, I learned about that through the city manager report, and it mentioned that you were talking with Northmont Schools. Could you elaborate on that? What is that about?
I'm just making sure they have capacity for new students and their existing facilities. I mean, their feedback we've gotten is that they've had a declining student body for a number of years, and they have capacity for students, so.
All right. Well, my last question, I've got to pivot back to the presentation where flex use was mentioned. I know that Mr. Dorman did a review, and I was reading it, and I wanted to say, flex use was mentioned. So, said flex use is defined as any combination of commercial slash office and housing, again, both in one area or in the same building. Flex use supports the central areas of a walkable city, creating a live-work-play environment. Okay, so I have the definition. So, didn't see much of that on this plan, but when I continued to look through the future land use plan, I really didn't understand why there is a flex use zone at the intersection of Putnam and Felsburg Union there in North Clayton, when it is just residences right now. And I'm looking for a reason why that is there.
That doesn't pertain to this particular project that we're discussing now.
Correct.
Correct, and I'm happy we can discuss that another time. I would prefer, if this council were to continue with this public hearing, with this, and we can discuss that later.
Okay, but I, I will hold you to that.
How many, of the 529, how many are rentals in this plan?
A hundred.
100 are rentals, and would that be in the orange section?
It's the northwest section.
The pink section?
Yeah. Yeah, it's kind of its own standalone community.
Regarding, yeah, with the rentals, during the planning commission meeting, there was discussion about that, but can you kind of go over the ownership and management of those? Because I know that was discussed, you know, quite a bit in that, or, if, if you're going to present later, that, you can, you can say, if you're going to present later, I don't need it answered right now.
Aaron Horn with DR Horton. I'm a part of our land acquisition team here in the Dayton area. So, to really answer your question on the rental side, we, we offer the same floor plans, the same homes that we would on a for-sale product as we do on the rental side. So, you know, we're not gonna offer anything differently from a product standpoint. What we do in terms of ownership, management, we build these out and then lease them up. And what we really do is, we package them together, and we work with institutional partners that own, you know, tens of thousands of units across the country to manage and operate them. Within the deeds of the property, we actually require that that owner hold that package of hundreds, some homes, and are not able to parcel and sell them out. So, there won't be disparage ownership amongst the package of, of rental units. And, and to give you an idea, you know, we haven't solidified any rental rates or anything like that. But, you know, we're gonna be on three and four-bedroom homes north of $2,200, $2,300 a month in terms of rent. So, you know, we're starting to see people who can't afford down payments. The interest rates are really taking an impact on their affordability. So, we're using the build-to-rent component as a way to give, you know, people in the community a sense of a single-family home, a single-family lifestyle, but may not have the means or qualifications to actually purchase a home. So, from a management and operations standpoint, you know, we're gonna be behind the, the construction. We obviously use local vendors to build the homes. But we work with larger partners that we have specific requirements for, that they actually hold the property for a period of time. So, over time, it's not being, you know, slotted up by 20 different owners over time. And, you know, we're gonna have professional management companies that operate our HOAs, you know, that mow the grass, clear, you know, do, do your day-to-day management of the property. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
And in other parts of the Northmont area where there's, you know, some like duplexes and, even just homes that have become rentals, that has created kind of a disjointed there. In fact, one I lived in right behind, actually close to, somewhat close to here years ago. I mean, yeah, I think the person who was owned it, they were trying to sell it for like eight years, and then everyone around it was, you know, all over the place too. So, that's reassuring to know that it would all be lumped together.
Yeah. Happy to answer any other questions as we move forward.
Is there anything else? Any other questions?
Going back to your original design plan for. The idea for this total development, what, do you have an estimated time you perceive that would be from start to finish? When you put the last house in?
You know, we, we plan worst-case scenario of, you know, probably 10 years, but I could see it happening in six or seven.
And then, my next question is one of those things that kind of come up every time these discussions come up about building. And we talked on the hallway briefly, when I asked if you were doing something locally that would kind of say you, you have a taste for the area in terms of what you're up against as far as the northern communities. So, if you just, if you wanted to expound on that a little bit?
Yeah, we, we're starting construction on a, a smaller subdivision in Butler Township. So, just a few miles over Stillwater from here. It's only 40 lots. It's finishing out an existing development. But then down in Cincinnati, we've got a, a number of larger communities that we've built out and then are still under construction. Cookery Preserve in Mason is a large one. It's about 300 lots. And then Harvest Meadows in Batavia is about 400 lots. And then Deer Run on the west side of Cincinnati is about 200 lots. That's still under construction, so.
I got a few more, and a few to you, and a few to the city manager. So, big one to, to, to hear, to you, and this might be a little redundant, I apologize. But the, the issue of water, you know, come up tonight, obviously was brought up quite a bit in the plan and commission meeting here. I guess just a, a simple answer, will this not, or, you know, will this have any negative impact on the surrounding areas as far as, as the water goes?
No, I mean, we, we have to design it to, to precondition, precondition runoffs, so. I mean, I don't know, Ryan, if you wanna talk about just how we have to send it to detention facilities and, and keep runoff from affecting. Neighbors negatively.
Will it most likely actually improve it?
In some scenarios, it, it should divert a large portion of runoff from their backyards and into a pond.
Okay. Last round question would be to the city manager, just to rate or aid. So, have we been in contact with Northmont Schools as, as far as with, you know, the, the potential increase in enrollment?
Yes. So, I can't, was it, probably about six months ago, we had a meeting with the superintendent and the business director about this project.
And maybe it was coming up, police and fire, what has been discussed with them as far as, you know, with this pro, with this project?
Police and fire have both reviewed the plan and have both signed off on the plan, for the preliminary plan.
That's all I had.
Anything else? Okay, hearing none. I'm gonna ask for a motion and second to open the floor for public comment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to open the floor to public comment by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Merkel. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we are open to the public comment now. Just again, we're gonna go with the three-minute rule, so please respect that. And, you know, it'd be great if we, you know, could kind of limit the redundancy. You'll still have your three minutes, but please, I'm just trying to keep that, just in the respect of everyone's time. Okay, so what I'm going to do is, we have everyone who's signed in, and I'm gonna go ahead and read the names. So, some people wrote yes, some wrote no. But I still wanna give everyone an opportunity to speak, so I'm gonna read the names as they're written. If you wrote no, or didn't write anything and don't wanna speak, just say no. You know, we'll, we'll just move on. Yeah, you'll have to be sworn in if you didn't, if you wrote no. And anyone who said yes, you decided, well, I'm not gonna speak, then, you know, that's okay too. We'll just move to the next person, okay? So, we're gonna start with Mr. Sims, David Sims. Wanna speak? Come up to the front, and did, did you get sworn in? Did you stand when? All right, well, you have to get sworn in. All right. Yeah, does anyone else think they've changed their mind and might wanna speak? You could stand up and we could do it all at once. Everyone else? Yeah. Okay. Raise your right hand, please. And repeat after me, or not repeat after me. Don't do that. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give to this council is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Okay, you're duly sworn in. Thank you. Okay, and also, if each person would come up, if you would state your name and address for the record. Go ahead, sir.
My name's David Sims, 406 Rankin, 406 Rankin Drive in Inglewood. I had several things come up today. I wasn't expected to speak. I, I just didn't think I would have anything to do, but there were several that I need to get to, I guess. Number one. Can you, can you tell me on these things where the, the ballpark is? It was, it's a football field now, yeah.
The football stadium's gonna stay where it was, and I believe it, it is going to be to the right.
Okay.
To the right of here.
I had several things. I have dyslexia, so I can have a problem remembering things. But. Talking about the water, they've had water with that, with that area for a long time. I've been down helping neighbors divert water, stuff like that. But I don't, I don't know how they fixed it up, but that would be one, one of the worries I'd have. Second, I heard a lot about the Air Force Base. And that was for the funny stuff. Anyway. There's a lot of people there have, have top-secret crypto security clearances and everything. And, and I, I heard, I don't know what they were talking about with, with Wright-Patterson. But, but it was within the realm of the. Where, where there's talking about having a, a, a place here where you could buy pot and all that kind of stuff. They were talking about a bunch of that. But it worries me that all these guys out there with big clearances like that, that could easily give away some very important information. I, I don't know if anything's being looked into, whatever they were talking about with the Wright-Patt people.
I think that's probably out of our scope here, quite frankly.
If you're the one that's having people come in to get this stuff, and you might wanna think about having some kind of a, something to say that they're not Wright-Patt people. And I had several other things. I'm gonna write them down. I, I'll, I'll get back with somebody here.
You're always welcome to come back. Thank you, sir. DeeDee Goodwin? Okay, thank you. Jacqueline Carey? Nope. Oh, I'm sorry. I'll do the best to read the names. My own writing's really.
A lot of my friends call me Jaqueline.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
So, I'm Jacqueline Carrier. I live at 403 Rankin Drive today. I was a Clayton resident for 10 years in Wanger Village. I lived in a new construction home on Dill Boulevard. While we were sad to wait for so many years to have neighbors, we were ecstatic when the new build started in 2017. Fortunately, as the relaunch of building happened, because things had changed hands multiple times and new builders had come in and out, when the new building started, they did not follow the grading plans or anything that was on file with the city of Clayton. We called the city of Clayton engineer, who was super helpful, awesome guy, totally helped us out, sent somebody out within 24 hours who measured the grading and gave us the information to show us, we're correct. The grading was indeed bad. So Clayton did their part, but he said, unfortunately, it's the builder's fault, it's the developer's fault, you gotta figure that out. Well, who is that? Well, we don't, I've gotta figure who that is now. So, as you try to go through the layers of the LLC that owns the LLC, that owns the law firm that owns your LLC, similar to how this group is constructed, it's very hard to find accountability. So, at 5763 Dill Boulevard, I paid out of my own pocket to fix my own drainage. Because a year, almost a year, well, actually, it was 16 months, I couldn't garden in my backyard. I had six, four to six inches in my backyard. Everybody was supporting me from the city of Clayton, but it wasn't Clayton's problem. So, I moved. Where did I move? Rankin Drive. So, I moved next to my childhood home. I lived on Rankin Drive and, or been there for dinner every Sunday night for 45 years. I knew almost everybody who built the original homes because everybody built them in the late 70s through, we were the last house in 1980. That field has flooded all of those years. How many minutes? I got 54 seconds, so I'm gonna speed it up. Tell my mom I can talk faster. But that's my childhood home. It was, it was almost developed many, many times. If you'd like to know the history, I know a lot about it. How do I know a lot about it? My dad was a civil engineer and the survey, the surveying that worked these communities, that did the work, that looked at the, the rock shelf, the degradation, the glacial erosion, and all of those pieces that still exist today. So, why wasn't it developed before? It was specifically for what was under that land and the possible craft effects that are gonna come, that even knowing we don't have sinkholes today, up your chances every time you drill. Now, my dad's got Alzheimer's and he doesn't have his thing. But I worked today with Brittany Perick, who is the geologic, the geologist at the state of Ohio. And we pulled up the maps, cause it's 2006 of 2021, and she outlined for me all the reasons why that spot is very suspect for crass. And it, it really comes down to, yes, there's variable sediments there, they're still there in the 2021 scans. The shallow limestone, it's still there. The water runoff issues, they exist. Eight retention, retention ponds, paid for two of those in my home association in Clayton. I don't know what the heck this home association's gonna be with eight. Because if you don't want mosquitoes, that's a lot of maintenance for eight retention ponds to solve drainage issues. And also, they're building, tonight I hear, I about flipped out, you're gonna build a, their solution to their problem was to build a hump on the other side of my house. And they're looking at the rain runoff of the field. But the rain runs off the back of these house yards into that field, and now it'll go into, okay, go into big hump, but anyway. So, thanks. But yeah, I know, I'm just gonna say too, I know I gotta go. But on page 13 of your own use plan, you said, consider environmental impacts and respect the environment. Respect this plot.
Thank you. Nick Oral? Lyndy Hughes?
No.
Richard Hughes?
No. Can't spell, no.
That was a lucky guess. Matt Gaston, no. Ryan LaFeld? We'll, we'll, we'll bring you up if needed. Courtney Hart? Come up, please.
Hi, I'm Courtney Hart, and I live at 425 Rankin Drive. I, I'm, I'm trying not to sound redundant, but I'm just gonna go off my notes, so I don't ramble. So, my concern, along with the other concerns that have been voiced and will probably soon be voiced, my concern is, again, the 200-plus kids that will add to the Northmont City School District. I hear that you guys kind of talked with them, but the student ratio is already really high, that I just find it interesting that we could still have, like, add more. The traffic that this will add on the Sweet Potato and the main intersections and cross streets. I worked for this, I currently work for the city of Inglewood and Brookville Police Department, and I was a dispatcher for 12 years for Montgomery County Sheriff's Office, and they dispatched for Clayton. Clayton police are already at minimal staffing, but adding that many more people in that development, the city won't have enough to patrol that area. They don't already patrol that area, which would make Clayton's response time much slower, including with priority calls outside of mutual aid coming, which Inglewood and Union will only come on the high priority. So, that's just a slower response time that I'm concerned with for the residents in that plat. And then I also just wanted to add with the developer's presentation, he talked about the needs of Clayton and the residents and how the extra people that the development would, like, the revenue and all that. But Clayton doesn't actually own any major businesses, right? So, I don't know how the financial part of that, that stems other than taxes, that Clayton would actually revenue from that. So, I could be wrong there. But those that live in Clayton, Inglewood, and Union, they came here for this beautiful land around us, and we're not in cities, like, major cities like Cincinnati and Columbus and such, and we like it rural. That's why we are here. I also had my first home in Clayton, and then we had to move. And that house behind us is at Westbrook and Union, which is now a development. My backyard was a farm field, now it's, it's not. I, I love this area, and I love community. And I feel like his proposal of renters and, and the Air Force Base and people coming and going, that's not them caring about our community, that's coming and leaving. And I just don't think that that's what Clayton's all about. Like, we're about community and a sense of belonging, not just a stop here and there, just to. here and there, just to kind of give you guys money and then we're gonna leave. No, that's not what Clayton's all about, which I appreciate Mr. Merkel saying. It's not even about the, the bottom dollar, it's about the community and what the people want. And so I just hope that you genuinely do listen to the people. I know that I'm in Rankin now, I'm in Inglewood, and so you're like, well, you're not even a Clayton resident. I get that, but I still love this community. I work for Inglewood, I work for Brookville, I worked for the county, and I do appreciate what you guys do. And I love the city, and I'd love to keep it rural. So thank you for listening to me. I appreciate it.
Thanks for coming. Karen Schultz? Paulette Farmer? Linda? Linda Bloom? Anything else? Patrick Ernst?
Thank you. My name's Patrick Ernst. I live at 455 Main Street. That is actually bisected by the Corporation Limit of Inglewood. And, but our house is on a 4.6 acre tract that is right here at the southeast corner. So we are Clayton resident. The houses and the bank barn on the side are 200 years old. It was originally part of the 1812 patent that was given to the Waybryts from the original subdivision. In full disclosure, I'm a licensed professional surveyor. I have 36 years in the industry of civil engineering, licensed in Ohio and in Kentucky. I noticed some anomalies with the application. The application was being made under SDG Warner Village. However, the owner of the property is SDG Warner Village LLC. I think those are two different entities. I don't know, I'm not legal. But it just seems that, that, that the applicant is, doesn't have a relationship with the, the landowner. The second item on the application on page one, they have only requested a look at the subdivision, the preliminary subdivision. The application has not requested a zoning change. So if you look at that application, page one, you'll see that that is only checked for a subdivision, for the preliminary. So I don't think that anything can be voted on today in regard to a zoning change to PDD. Overall concerns with the subdivision design, my concern is your comprehensive plan, that's only about six and a half years old, where it identifies reduced sprawl and improved quality of life. I'm not really sure how this development plan actually reduces that, that urban sprawl. And I'm also concerned about the impact that we have on, on my backyard. That it is a, a problem with the quality of life. My wife and I purchased this property about four, five years ago, and we did that for a specific reason. And that was to get out of subdivision, tight subdivisions in the Dayton-Kettering area. And we like our eight acres, and we like to keep it rural. As was promised back in 1998, that no development would be, rural lands would happen north of US 40 when the merger was with Ranjola Township and the Village of Clayton. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Shane Bauer? Bruce Routson?
Shocking. Thank you for the time. Hi, Mike. I'm Bruce Routson, 101 Dubner Drive, Union. My house is the first house on the south side of Union when you turn off Sweet Potato. Currently, traffic on Sweet Potato is horrible. It's a racetrack. I've had cars in my front yard. I've had mailboxes torn out. Clayton does not patrol Sweet Potato. And I've tried to ask for that patrol, because people do 70, 80 miles an hour. I like where I live because I have a field across, but I am not against residential development. I think the PDD's a stretch, because once it's PDD, virtually anything can go in that property. I was president of zoning board for Belvoir Township for 10 years. And that's fine, we can dispute that. I am asking the council to consider what this will do to the community. Not only Clayton, but Inglewood and Union. We're all joined together. Our shopping is very crowded right now. So to add 1,000 people or more seems kind of ridiculous. Our roadways probably cannot bear that kind of traffic. I see us becoming Huber Heights, the three entities becoming Huber Heights. And I don't like Huber Heights. That's why I live here. That's really all I have, but I'd appreciate some consideration for the adjoining municipalities also. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. The Pulises, did you want to speak on this issue? Nope, nope. Lauren Kinsler?
Good evening. Hi, Brendan, council. I'm Lauren Kinsler. I live at 317 Rankin. I appreciate some of the questions that the developer answered, but I do have some concerns. Maine is just the sprawl and the amount of homes. And the rental in the last council hearing, not council, but the planning commission hearing, we were told the rental agreement would be around $3,000 a month. So it seems like facts are changing, which is kind of a concern. And then, obviously, we're all proponents of our local public school. I have a fifth grader at Union. There's 30 kids in his classroom. I think we need to come together to think of some solutions, as, you know, all of these small, separate entities, communities, work together and support our schools and our students. But building right now might not be good. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Shane Kinsler? Gary Turborg? You got sworn in, right? You got sworn in, yes.
I'm Gary Turborg. I live at 410 Beach Grove in Inglewood. And one of the concerns I have is, he mentioned when they put in a retention pond up there, that they could go down 10 feet for that. That's not gonna happen, because they're gonna hit the limestone. I have personally seen it behind my house, and it's less than five feet, and you're gonna hit that limestone bluff. And that's gonna be a real problem. I had to pay almost $15,000 for an additional drainage system in my area. And that's gonna cause a problem. And what I would like to know is if the council would approve this movement, would they write in a stipulation that would protect us if they do deviate water in that area and it causes damage to our houses, they will be liable? Because that's a real serious problem there. Another thing, around that woods behind me, a few years ago, one of my neighbors, who was a veterinarian for the US Air Force, called in the Montgomery County entomologist. They put out two mosquito traps, because we had a real problem. And they said, we'll put these traps out, and we'll check them overnight. If you got more than 5,000 mosquitoes in each one, we'll consider that a problem, we'll get spraying done. The one behind my house had 23,000. The one on the corner of Chris, and, well, it's right up Chris Drive, right there. That had 21,000. Bear that in mind.
Thank you, sir. Mark and/or Debbie McConnell?
My name's Mark McConnell. I live at 320 Chris, and I want to look at this map just for a moment. Okay, I live on Chris and Beach Grove. It's right above the R in that December 2024 plan. I guess my one question would be, just seeing this for the first time tonight, looking at the proposed development, I'm not against this development. I knew that day would come, when that would be used for something. But here's my concern. The gentleman just spoke. I live across the street from the people who have those woods in their backyard. There is a problem with a lot of water, mosquitoes, and so forth. But just looking at this, my real concern is that if you look where OR Edgington was, and you go south to the intersection of Maine and 40, I understand there might have to be a traffic light at Sweet Potato. But to get to my house on Chris, if you go south of where OR Edgington was, to 40 and 48, and you head west on 40, out towards, past Chris where I live, there are no more than seven or eight access points to get to my home. When looking at this map, I see three access points to this neighborhood, all off of Sweet Potato. I see no exits from the west, the east, or the south. My concern is, as this goes forward, especially if there's shared fire and police, you're gonna have a problem getting back to folks where they back up to Rankin. Time is the essence. So I just want to make sure that as this goes forward and this proposal goes forward, that what I thought would happen one day was Chris going all the way through. But it looks like it's not going to. So I would just say, take into consideration the access points, because if you had a wreck at Sweet Potato in Maine and it backed up, nobody can get out of the neighborhood. So thank you for the time. I just thought I'd mention that.
Thank you, sir. Debbie, did you want to say anything additional? Okay, thank you. Sam or Christie Cox? Mr. Bias?
Doug Bias, 10857 Haver Road. And I was gonna talk, speak on two things tonight, but I'll save the second one for the visitors' comments at the end. The second one's gonna be about TIFs, and I will say this now, though, that the first representative for the developer talked at length about how desirable this area is, and how the demand is greater than the supply. So I would just take that in consideration when you're considering TIFs. I certainly don't think we're a blighted area, as is often considered for, for TIFs. I'm not here tonight on behalf of Keep It Rural, so I'll make that upfront. But I will say, just, you know, from my own personal viewpoint, you know, these recent housing developments are really beginning to show just what a mess it is to have three separate and distinct cities, each with their own priorities and policies, so closely intertwined. One only needs to look at a map of Clayton to see how confusing and messy it is. You'll find islands of Clayton completely surrounded by, entirely by Inglewood or Union land and vice versa. And while Clayton and Inglewood and Union share a police and fire collaborative, you know, one thing that I and many other citizens don't see is much of a development collaborative. Clayton, Inglewood, and Union share infrastructure and resources, but they may have different priorities and development plans. Lack of collaboration will likely result in misaligned policies, such as inconsistent zoning regulations, traffic management strategies, and public service upgrades. While there may be a little cooperation here and there, many of us are very concerned about the seeming lack of coordination amongst the three cities. And I know we need to grow. We've, you know, we've talked about that over the last few years, Mr. Mayor, you know? And I, and I appreciate your, your viewpoint on that as well. But at what rate do we need and want to grow? I mean, have you driven through the area where Meyer and Panera is, you know, trying to get back there to Chipotle and anything? It's, it's awful. I, I mean, I go to Kroger and I can't help but bump into people. And I was just at Kroger last week, and I'm thinking, my goodness, 550 more homes here. And, you know, and it's the same at Walmart, Aldi, they're frequently this way as well. And, you know, lest we think Dollar General Market or the new grocery outlet are gonna mitigate this, you know? I don't think that'll be the case, but. The, again, the first representative for the developer mentioned wanting to meet the needs and wants of the community, but I don't know about you, but I don't want to have congested traffic on the roads. And I want to be able to get groceries without tripping over other people in the stores. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. As a side note on that, I think the, the small regional, local slash regional development, I, I think our doors are open here. I'll just leave it at that, so. You're preaching to the choir. Mr. Horn? No. Mr. Benkin? Yep, no. Tammy Blevins?
Hello. So I'm Tammy Blevins, 421 Rankin. We kind of agree a lot on a lot of things, but some things that I'd like to mention is the schooling. So I did talk to, I went to Union Elementary. I talked to the principal today. He said they are at full capacity. They cannot, oh, sorry. They cannot fit anymore at their school. So to me, it just doesn't make sense. When we were a smaller community, smaller houses, or not smaller houses, less houses, we had seven elementaries. Now we have more houses and four elementaries. It just is not adding up. And so I'm, what my question is, is if we do this development and we have no place to put them, what happens? Where do they go? Or is there a study that shows the community cannot handle it, so does the development stop? That's a question. Can anybody, does anybody know, or?
We're not really gonna try to go into answering a lot of everyone's questions, because everyone has a bunch of questions. But I think, again, we work closely with Northmont if, I mean, you got, you know, five of seven up here are Northmont grads, and the last thing we're gonna ever do is do anything to hurt that school system, no matter what. That's a top priority. I think I speak for the rest of us up here that are in that boat. But we, we do deal directly with the administration on this. My kids go to Northmont and all that, too. My daughter's a teacher there, blah, blah, blah. We, it's important that we fit in with the school system. And we will do that. So, you know. I, I can't speak for Tony. He's not here, but we deal directly with Tony and, as Amanda said, some other of the administration, so.
So it will be addressed, though, is what you're, like, with the traffic study with the?
It's been addressed, and we wouldn't, we probably, I'm gonna say, go out on a limb and say, we wouldn't even propose it if, if Superintendent Thomas said, hey, we can't handle anymore, we don't want anymore. I don't even think we would go any further with it. I mean, without addressing that first.
Okay, so would there be, would kids be switching schools, or how would that work, or?
That's not a decision for the city of Clayton. That would be, yeah, something for the school board.
Okay, so. And then also, last time, a lot of people spoke about the wildlife. And I know that didn't get brought up today. I don't know if other people were gonna talk about it, but there's a lot of wildlife back there that are gonna just disappear. So, I mean, is there concerns with that, or we just don't, that just doesn't matter?
I think we're all concerned about the environment, and it's a balance. I mean, I don't know what else, I don't know how else to answer it. It's, it's a balance.
Mayor, just to add on, you know, ma'am, we aren't for the comments. I, I do feel rude, because we're not able to respond, but the point of the comments is to let the citizens talk. We listen, and then we'll address it later. Just so you know, as to why no one up here is talking, that's how.
Yeah, I mean, I just, you know, we're just looking for answers that, you know, so we can move forward and figure out what's gonna happen with the rest of us, you know? It's not just about the comments, about finding out information. So, okay, that was all.
Okay, thank you very much. Randy Schultz?
Hi, my name is Randy Schultz. I live at 400 Beach Grove Drive in Inglewood, and I have for the last 25 years. Prior to that, I lived in Clayton. Well, it wasn't Clayton at the time, it was Randolph Township. And it was when we were approached about voting for the merger between Clayton and Randolph Township. And promises were made, and we always like expect to see promises kept. One of those promises was there would be no income tax in the city of Clayton. Obviously, that promise was not kept. I never heard the five-year part. Well, that wasn't clarified when I voted. So I did vote for it. I wish now I would not have, because it's created what we have today, which is this intermingling of all these pockets between Inglewood, Union, of course, if you go across the Stillwater River, Butler Township, and Clayton. And like another gentleman said earlier, I don't want to live in Huber Heights. That's why I moved here, in part for the rural atmosphere. I grew up on a farm up in Dark County. My mother lives in Greenville. My kids all live in Columbus and Cincinnati, so we kind of triangulate and it puts me right here then. But I don't know how much longer I can afford to live in Inglewood because, as you might have noticed, the school district had two recent levies that both failed at the ballot box. What will happen to the next one? Will they all continue to fail? I know I can't afford to pay any more real estate tax as my taxes just went up $1,200 a year because of the recent property revaluation. Now, homes aren't really selling that much in Inglewood right now. There's been a house for sale down my street for a good six months, if not longer. They can't sell it. A couple others are popping up on the market. So to say that there's a demand for housing, I would dispute that. I think there's a demand for lower interest rates. I don't know that we're going to see that anytime soon, which begs the question, how can anybody afford to buy these new homes that they're talking about building north of us? Second subject on that, police and fire response. I know someone else addressed it briefly, but you can't keep building new properties north of Forty without building a firehouse up there someday. It's not fair to Inglewood or Union to fund the fire departments, so we'll have to be the ones that respond to that under mutual aid. What provisions are you making to put a firehouse up there to supplement the need for that? Something to be concerned about. Water is always an issue. I personally don't have it in my basement because my house sets up high enough, but my next-door neighbor is constantly getting flooding out of the, there's a, kind of like a... Oh, no, just one sec. Right here in the corner is a wetland, and they don't plan to address that. That's only going to get worse for drainage. So I appreciate you looking at that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Tisha Tanner?
Thank you for pronouncing it correctly. Tisha Tanner, 414 Beach Grove Drive. And I have a written statement, so I'm just going to read. I want to do it very fast because I only have three minutes. Greetings, Clayton City Council. As adjourning property owner, we would like to communicate the following concerns, risks related to the Warner Village project that may result from the zoning district change and preliminary subdivision plan approval. For context, I would list existing projects and then outline risks and concerns with the proposed project. Grand Villas of Clayton, 120 units. Hunter Path, 125 units. Winger Village, Section Three. Village of North Clayton, proposed 150 to 200 units. Risks and concerns. All development projects have a degree of inherited uncertainty. However, unnecessary risks and concerns should be identified, eliminate, or at least mitigate as soon as possible. Risk one, scale and pass performance. The track record for the city's development sponsors overseeing sites greater than 500 units is unknown. If sites smaller than 150 units experience performance issues, then a site of 500 units is at risk of similar or greater performance issues and risks. Concern one, limited local precedence. Can the council or project sponsor identify successful 500-unit subdivisions in the immediate vicinity and even within the broader Dayton-Kettering-Beverly Creek metro area? The proposed development size is unprecedented. According to the 2020-10-year census, the total housing units in Clayton was only 5,490 units. What is the unique value proposition of the project? Is a 10% increase in units feasible, given past performance for development less than 150 in the prior two decades? Risk two, protracted completion timelines. A prolonged construction timeline increases the risk of cost overruns and potential builder fatigue, project overturns, and a patchwork of empty lots. For example, the Village of North Clayton was originally brought forward in 2005. This project was delayed and various reasons until Windsor Properties of Columbus purchased the property in 2020. The build-out continues to this present day. Section Three of Winger Village sat dormant for almost 15 years. It finally nears completion in 2025. The history performance of Clayton projects, particularly those with less than 150 homes... Man, that was fast. Well, just, just that the concerns are, are great and the risks are great. And the, the birth rate also from the, the census is only 2.9% in the Clayton area. So the demand is, is, is not as high as is projected. And it's also the affordability. And so we're just really concerned about the, all of the issues that have been granted here today. And if we can't get 150 units developed within 20 years, what are we going to do with 500? And I've personally been, I lived in the city of Trotwood and the same thing happened. The developer came in, they went under, and there was a bunch of empty lots. And even to this day, I've been in Clayton and in Inglewood for 20 years, and they're still not done. So that, that's the concern, that you start and you don't finish. And then City of Clayton is looking bad because we didn't finish multiple projects. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anna Ernst?
Appreciate your time. My name is Anna Ernst. I live at 455 North Main. My husband and I are new, new residents to the area, so we, we have our concerns as someone that's new to the community. I do want to piggyback on our last residents' comments about the incomplete developments that already exist within Clayton, within the city of Clayton. You know, I'm new, so I just went to City Clayton website and looked at some information and found that the city of Clayton's population has remained virtually unchained for 25 years. And this is your website. So 13,000 to 13,500, with the fluctuation of only 50 people, plus or minus, per census. Three censuses in a row. So again, I don't see how we can justify 500, 550 units when we have incomplete units. What I found was the median income of 90,000 a year is enough to support someone buying maybe a $300,000 house. Some of these homes are much more than that. I'm not disputing what they have presented. I understand the concept. It's, it can be very interesting. I don't think that Clayton is ready for this. I don't, and I absolutely do not believe this site is appropriate. The house that we bought is 200 years old. It was built by Jacob Waybright and Nancy Wanger. That tells you, these are original homeowners, homestead. That land has never been anything but farmland. I have a big concern. I heard someone talk about a geologic study by a geologist. This is something that has not been addressed before. Our home is built into the edge of that limestone slab. You want to see what it looks like? Come look at our basement. You want to see? Come look at this 200-year-old bank barn. It's dense, it's thick. You do anything to that limestone, you're going to get what they call karst, K-R-S-T. That's flow of water through the limestone. Unknown how much, no way to mitigate it. It's not runoff. So you're going to take a 200-year-old house that we are preserving, that we are restoring, that we had a historic preservationist come and evaluate, and he said, quote, "This house is a gem worth preserving." That's why we are using our retirement energies and funds to reverse this house that was initially connected to that land. That land, it just needs to be a green space. We got two very densely populated areas north and south of it. Let's just leave it alone.
Thank you. Thomas Jones? Miles Mayer? Were you sworn in?
I was.
Okay.
Good evening, Council. I'm Miles Mayer, 408 Beach Grove. I'm not an engineer or environmentalist or a land developer, so, you know, I don't have the vast experience or knowledge to speak on this super knowledgeably. But I work at Wright-Patterson Air Force Base. And before I moved to Ohio, I lived in North Carolina. I was stationed at Seymour Johnson. And when I first got there, I, I wanted to buy a house and there was a new development going up. And I was super excited, bought the house, and it, it was terrible. It was awful. That's not a problem, that's unique to North Carolina. As a matter of fact, you can, no offense to you guys, but you can Google Fisher Homes or Dr. Horton Home Issues in 10 seconds and see thousands of complaints about the quality of these homes. One of the reasons that we moved to this area is because, as other people have said, it's not Huber Heights and it's not Fairborn. I grew up in Northern Virginia, and that entire area is a cancer of overdevelopment. I like being able to drive three miles in five minutes. You start to overdevelop places that three miles is going to take you 15 minutes, 20 minutes. I mean, I lived this, I know it. So I like being able to get to work in 45 minutes. And we build all these houses, we're going to increase traffic. And there's been some talk about the traffic study and how it'll be done later. I mean, I'll do it for you right now. You add 500 houses, two cars a house, 1,000 cars onto the roads, there's going to be traffic. They say, well, we'll widen lanes and we'll do all this. Well, how long is that going to take, right? You can drive down 75 right now. And for at least eight months that I've been living here, that construction on 75 has been going on. So how long is the construction in a, I would assume, less well-funded area going to take? And then earlier, on the earlier topic, you talked about getting ahead of or staying behind the curve. I think in this context, it's okay to stay behind the curve of home development. You don't need to rush into every empty plot of land and throw 500 houses on there. So I think it's okay to stay behind the curve. And the last thing I'll say is, I'm not sure about the usual turnout. This is my first time here. But it would seem to me that this is a pretty full house. So I would urge the council to listen to the people and see this audience and understand that this is a hot issue for a lot of us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Bonnie and/or George Bozovich? Well, yeah. No? Thank you. David and/or Miranda Neff? And were you sworn in?
Yes.
Okay. All right. We'll take your word for it.
My name's Miranda Neff. I live at 83 Sweet Potato Ridge Road, three houses down from Main. So I'll be at ground zero. That traffic light, I will be probably sitting at it to get out of my driveway every day. So I'm definitely at ground zero for this. And I definitely share the sentiments of all my neighbors, their concerns, not just for me personally, but for the community. I don't want to reiterate all of those. But speaking to some of the things that I heard here today, I would encourage you to look at median income in the Dayton metro in our area where they're proposing all of these new renters are going to come from, because I don't think that the median, median incomes can support that dollar amount of rental every month. Also, I would like to put some details behind what my previous neighbor was talking about. If you were to Google D.R. Horton, you would see that they've been involved in many lawsuits, including class action lawsuits alleging construction defects and discrimination for people with disabilities. This would include, for example, a South Carolina lawsuit resulting in a $16.1 million settlement, alleging that D.R. Horton used substandard construction practices and cheaper materials, breach of warranty lawsuits, homeowners that filed lawsuits alleging that D.R. Horton failed to honor their warranties. For example, a Florida lawsuit resulted in a $9.6 million verdict against D.R. Horton. Deceptive practices. Homeowners have filed lawsuits alleging that D.R. Horton engaged in misleading sales practices. For example, some homeowners claimed that they were promised certain features and quality standards that were not met. So these are very real things. There's numbers, figures, cases behind them indicating that you have to be careful who you're entering into a business partnership with in this case. So I just encourage you to look at those pieces of information. I've also seen many, many news reports specifically about D.R. Horton having developments in progress all over the country that are sitting with hundreds, if not thousands, of homes that are empty because no one can afford to buy them. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Linda Black? Thank you. Jennifer Gonzalez?
With Fisher Homes, I can answer any questions.
Okay, no? Okay. Okay, that's it for the list. Is there anyone that wanted to speak that didn't get to? Did you get sworn in? Okay. Just state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Katie Howard. I live at 196 Sweet Potato Ridge Road. I agree with all my fellow citizens. I'm going to kind of repeat some stuff I said at the last meeting that you folks weren't here for. My biggest concern, aside from everything they already mentioned that I'm not going to piggyback off of, is the road. Has there been talks about, I know there's traffic studies to happen, but living on Sweet Potato, as someone else mentioned, it is a very difficult road. We already have high traffic on there. This is going to make it hard with all those just spilling out onto Sweet Potato. And have you guys talked about easement? And where, the road's going to be widened because half of it is Union, half of it is Clayton. I don't want easement on my property. I don't know if you guys have talked about that at all. I don't think this build can support that amount of traffic on it. On top of the schools and everything else, I think it's going to be a very big issue. The gentleman that first spoke also talked about how families want a, these types of houses. Well, I'll tell you, my husband and I moved to this area 12 years ago because we liked the area. We love the rural aspect of it. Our daughter started school in Northmont when she was in kindergarten. She's going to graduate this year. We now bought our second home in Union, where it's on Sweet Potato. It's one of the original houses as well. It's about 120 years old. And we loved it because we have an acre's worth of land, but we're surrounded by these residential houses, and we have this beautiful view across the street. We also own a business that has been in Inglewood successfully for seven years. And now it's changing. And now we don't know if we want this anymore because so much stuff is changing around us. It's not what we bought when we moved here. And we just really want you to think about what all your citizens are saying. We don't want this. This is not something that needs to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Were you sworn in? All right. If you state your name and address for the record, please.
Mike Stallings, 3470 Sweet Potato Ridge Road. I own the property to the northwest. It's, that lot is eight acres, then there's another adjoining lot. It's, that lot is eight acres, then there's another adjoining lot. We keep talking about open space. They talk about the way they've got this plan. It's going to be great for open space. I don't see how putting a development on farmland helps open space views for anybody that lives around this. That's number one. Number two, I support a lot of what has already been said by the citizens that have already gotten up and talked. Sweet Potato Ridge Road is already, it's already too congested. I don't want this. This doesn't enhance my life at all. And I did notice on the pictures of the houses, can we go back to the pictures of the houses?
It's basically irrelevant at this point. It doesn't matter.
Well, one of the showcase houses, the siding on it looked like it was getting ready to come off. I mean, I mean, what kind of quality is that? You know, and that's their showcase pictures, like, this is what we're going to build. I don't want a bunch of rental houses next to me. That's where they're all going, right next to me, where the siding's already starting to come off, and there's brand-new builds. So that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no hands or hearing no, no other interesting.
Move to close the public hearing?
Public comment.
Second.
Second.
We've done public comments first.
Any public comments in favor or opposition of the application? Is that what you're talking about? Yeah. Yeah, there's a motion to, and seconded, to close the floor. The public comment? Yeah. I didn't know what you were saying, sorry. And it's made by Mr. Gorman, seconded by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. And that, let the record show, that's unanimous. Does the applicant want us, any of you want to say anything at this point? No? Okay. Any further discussion among the council?
When the comments were made about water runoff, whether it be the houses along Rankin or Beech Grove, I mean, that's one of the things you have to address in terms of any water that comes upon your property has to be controlled. Or any water running from your property to adjoining properties has to be controlled. The water or those wetland areas potentially in the back corner that they say are not being addressed, I mean, one way or another, if it's standing water and a potential public health issue, it's one of those areas that you would have to take into consideration as part of your site plan, correct?
Well, we can't disturb the wetlands. Those are protected by the OPA.
Is it recognized as being an approved wetland area?
Yeah. Well, portions of it. But I mean, there's things you can do for mosquito mitigation and all that.
Well, I would say, there's other areas that are set up as wetland areas that, once they put them under control as far as mitigating the situation, they can be handled. It doesn't mean you have to drain it. It just means, it's just not sitting at a back corner that's untouched, that there's things that you can work with the Department of Natural Resources to essentially address and take care of.
Yes, specifically with our stormwater pond and making sure things actually drain instead of stand.
Ever thought about making them a detention basin rather than a retention basin? And you can't do that?
You can't.
Well, if it's a mosquito problem, why don't we look at that maybe, huh?
I think some, I think plenty of them will be in the back.
So I'm assuming that our development team here, you know, obviously heard what everyone said, and the things that, bless you, things that are, that are concerns, I don't know if there's any new concerns from the planning commission, but if you would take everything into advisement. Okay. Is there a motion?
Just one last thing. I mean, we've talked about density, we've talked about volume, and I just want on the record that you're locked in at 529. You just cannot come off of that number. All right, that's affirmative. Okay.
Okay. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to close the public hearing by Mr. Gorman, seconded by Mr. Farmer. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. The public hearing is now closed. All right, I want to thank everyone for all the input, and thanks for, everyone for coming out tonight. The next item on our agenda is clerk's report.
We have before you the council meeting minutes of December 5th, 2024.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve the council meeting minutes as written by Mr. Gorman, seconded by Mr. Henning. Is that right? Mr. Henning?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record show that that is unanimous. We're just going to keep going. If you guys have to go, that's good, but we do appreciate everyone coming out. Old business, we have none. New business, we're going to talk about or take a votes on both of the ordinances tonight. So on the first.
I have to interrupt for just a second.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I have a request to add a resolution to the end of the agenda, which is Resolution 01-25-12, which is a resolution approving amendments to Clayton Charter sections regarding publication by newspaper. So we just need a motion, seconded vote to add that to the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to add a resolution to the end of the agenda by Mr. Merkel, seconded by Mr. Bachman. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Let the record show that's unanimous. So will you read the first ordinance, please?
Ordinance 001-25-01, an ordinance adopting, rejecting, or modifying the recommendation of the planning commission to amend the Clayton Planning and Zoning Code in order to permit adult-use cannabis operators with specified limitations within the city of Clayton, Ohio.
I would move to reject the planning commission's recommendations, and I agree with you, Mayor. At 9:39 PM, you said we work very closely with the superintendent, and if they don't want something, we wouldn't entertain it. And I think this resolution that was signed on behalf of all the board members tells us what they think of that. So that's where I stand.
Can we have a, oh, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion to reject the ordinance as written by Mr. Henning, seconded by Mr. Farmer. Can we have a voice vote, please?
Farmer?
Yes.
Henning?
Yes.
Gorman?
No.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Bachman?
No.
And Stevens?
No. So the ordinance is rejected four to three. And will you read the second?
Before we go forward, if this has been rejected, can it be revised in a later date to come back?
Yeah, so because you rejected the recommendation of the planning commission, the moratorium that you put in place is still in effect, and that remains in effect until September 5th, 2025.
So we can hold off doing anything until September?
Correct. Well, I wouldn't wait until September, but.
Essentially, we could wait till September, between now and September to take the next step.
Can we make another motion to accept it?
You could if you wanted to, yeah.
Okay. I want to. I'll make the motion that we accept the planning commission's recommendation.
Will you read the second ordinance, please?
Ordinance 001-25-02, an ordinance adopting, rejecting, or modifying the planning commission's recommendation to approve with specified conditions the application of SDG Warner Village LLC for a change in zoning from residential single-unit district, RSD, to planned development district, PDD, and to further approve the preliminary development plan for 183.1044 acres of property located near the intersection of Sweet Potato Ridge Road and Main Street bearing parcel ID number M600301001 within the city of Clayton, Ohio.
Is there a motion to accept it as written? Or modify or reject?
I'll move to adopt.
Adopt as written. Motion to adopt as written by Mr. Bachman. Is there a second?
I have a question. Amanda, you said earlier that this will be presented to us at least one more time, at which time we could change our mind. Didn't you say there'd be a final recommendation that we could turn down if we so approved?
Absolutely. So if council vote on this this evening, it'll come back the next council meeting. After that, if it passes, the developer will then present a final development plan, which will come before council again.
And on the final plan, we could.
But can we modify it after, if we adopt it, can we go back to modify it? No?
No, because the motion in second was to adopt it as is.
Okay.
Was there a second? Is there a second? Motion by Mr. Bachman?
I'll second to adopt.
Second by Mr. Merkel. Can we get a voice vote on that to adopt as written?
Farmer?
No.
Henning?
No.
Gorman?
No.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
No.
Bachman?
Yes.
And Stevens?
Yes. So it's down four to three? Okay. Can we go to the resolutions and read the first resolution, please?
Okay. Now, if it's not been adopted, what's the next step?
So I think there may have been miscommunication. So you could have modified, so, all right, can they still do that? Now, the applicant can resubmit to planning commission, and we can go through the process again. Or the applicant could potentially go to court and sue the city. So those are the options.
Will you read the first resolution, please?
Clayton Representatives to the First Suburbs Consortium for the year 2025.
I'll move that we nominate me as the, as the designate, and Greg is the alternate, yes.
A second.
Motion to nominate Mr. Gorman as the.
It's Kenny and I as the designate, and Greg is the alternate.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Gorman for Mr. Gorman and Mr. Henning to be the designates, and Mr. Merkel to be the alternate. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record, it was, yeah, Greg. And will you read the second resolution, please?
Resolution R. 01-25-02, a resolution appointing Clayton representatives to the Volunteer Firefighters Dependence Fund Board for the year 2025.
And currently, we've had, yeah, currently, we've had Mr. Farmer and, and Ms. Kelly on this. I'll make a motion that we, yeah, we give, put them both back on.
I'll second it.
All right.
Mayor, just one note on this one. As I was reviewing this beforehand, I indicated in the body that it was for the year 2024 because I was used to typing 2024. Since that's an obvious scribe in her's area, I can correct that without a vote of council set out, we correct it to 2025. I just wanted to put that on the record.
So the, on the vote, it's Mr. Farmer and Ms. Kelly for the Volunteer Firefighters Dependence Fund. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Let the record show that's unanimous, and we, will you read the third resolution, please?
Resolution R. 05, Resolution R. 01-25-03, a resolution to appoint a Clayton representative and an alternate to the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission and Transportation Committee for the year 2025.
I move to approve Mayor Stevens and Councilmember Gorman as the alternative.
They got me on the alternate, yeah.
Okay, however it is now. Mayor Stevens and then to Mr. Gorman.
Yeah. I'll second that.
All right, it's been properly motioned and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that's, that those two gentlemen, or we two gentlemen are back And will you read the fourth resolution, please?
Resolution R. 01-25-04, a resolution appointing member to the Cost Recovery Impact Fees
And I'll, motion that we place Kenny back, Kenny Henning, back on the Cost Recovery Impact Fee Appeal Board.
I'll, I'll second your motion, Mayor.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. And we read the fifth resolution, please.
Resolution R. 01-25-05, a resolution appointing Kim Williams to the planning commission.
I'd like to talk about this one. I understand during COVID, there's maybe a drop-off on involvement, but though it was not advertised, we do nominate a person to, we do nominate a person to planning commission each year. If, I guess I'm having some concerns that, oh, if the person wants to continue, that we just let them continue. Well, what if someone else in the city has an interest and would like to be considered? I think that, I think they should get a fair shake. If they bother to learn the process and see, okay, if I submit this before the meeting, that they should be considered. This isn't about Ms. Williams or anyone else. It's simply about the process, that we just don't default to, if they want to continue, they just keep doing it, especially if we have somebody that might have an interest.
I think we do that.
Amanda did do that.
Well, so for this planning commission seat, we did not, because Ms. Williams wanted to continue. We have an open BZA seat that we are advertising for, because Mr. Johnson indicated that he was leaving. His term doesn't expire until February 14th of '29, I think. It's pretty far out. So we're advertising for that one, and people can submit for that. We actually had two already, or three, submit for that position.
So since I'm so new to this, is this written somewhere that that is just the policy of the city or the council to do that?
It's not. I mean, my experience with the council has been that if the person's serving on the planning commission or whichever board, and their term expires and they wish to continue to serve, they're permitted to continue to serve unless I hear otherwise from council.
Move for approval.
Okay, it's been properly motioned and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, can we have a voice vote on that?
Mr. Farmer?
No.
Henning?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Bachman?
Yes.
And Stevens?
Yes. Okay, can you read the sixth resolution, please?
Resolution R. 01-25-06, a resolution approving an amendment to Clayton Charter Section 3.04, Mayor and Vice Mayor.
I'll move for approval.
Is this what you wanted to talk, yeah, yeah, these are the charter amendments that we're asking the, yeah.
So I would move that we table, well, you made a motion to.
Okay, go ahead. I'll take my motion.
I would move that we.
Well, I actually think, I actually think this kind of warrants a little bit of an explanation, so.
So I would move to table the one, two, three, four, the four resolutions to go to the Board of Elections, because when we put them on, the state legislature approved a bond issue to go on the May ballot. Previously, they would have paid for that election. In this case, they will only pay for their portion of the election administration. So if we were to put something on, we would have chargebacks. And I would anticipate the chargebacks being $10,000 to $15,000 for these four measures. Since they're not imperative to city operations, I would just move that we table them until a later time when we can put them on and not have such a high chargeback. So that would be my, my motion is that we table them.
Second.
And I would, I would ask Mr. Henning, you referenced four, actually, we added one, so there's a total of five. So if you want to amend your motion.
I would amend it to the five resolutions. I'm sorry.
And I'm just going to read those numbers into the record, just so we're clear. That would be Resolution 012506, 012507, 012508, 012509, and 012512.
Okay, it's been properly motioned and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All... Mr. Henning was the motion, and Ms. Kelly was the second. And let's do that again. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so those, those five resolutions have been tabled until later in the year, probably. And will you read the next resolution, please?
The Resolution R. 012510, a resolution authorizing all actions necessary to effect a governmental natural gas aggregation program with opt-out provisions pursuant to Section 4929.26 of the Ohio Revised Code directing the Montgomery County Board of Elections to submit a ballot question to the electors. Mayor and council, I would recommend that we table this one as well.
That is my suggestion. We table this one as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because we're going to be charged back on it.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly, yep, and Ms. Kelly. It's been properly motioned and seconded to be tabled. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, and will you read the final resolution?
Resolution R. 012511, a resolution of the City of Clayton, Ohio, supporting the Ohio Municipal League's challenge of AT&amp;T's tariff application at the Public Utilities Commission of Ohio. So a little background, I received notification from OML today that AT&amp;T actually withdrew their petition, but I would still encourage council to go ahead and pass this resolution supporting OML's stance that AT&amp;T should not put the cost of relocation of their utilities on the municipality. It's a simple resolution. If there are costs down the road, there would be another resolution. If council wanted to continue with any lawsuits, that would be pending.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve as written by Ms. Gorman, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that passed unanimously. That's it for the ordinances and resolutions. We'll move to the city manager's report, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll keep it short. One, just a reminder that city offices are closed on Monday, January 20th, 2025, in observance of Martin Luther King Jr. Day. We received notice from Montgomery County Solid Waste Management District that there is a public hearing on January 21st from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. at their location over on Sandridge Drive concerning the new plan that they have. There is a nominal increase that they are, that they are proposing in tipping fees. You can see there that Clayton's annual increases are spelled out. It's about five cents a year per household between '26 and '2030. Mr. Minor did state that if council would like, he would come in and do a presentation if that is something you desire. If not, the public is welcome to view the plan that is on their website. We can actually link it to our social media pages, so that may be a little more accessible. And then they can also attend the public hearing. Sorry. The Montgomery County Soil and Water, the Montgomery County Commissioners held the public hearing for the Soil and Water Hoak Road Project back at December 10th. There were, there was no one in attendance who spoke against the project. The county commissioners voted unanimously to approve the project. Ed Everman, Montgomery County Soil and Water District Director, stated that the district hopes to get the, get the project out to bid soon and work to commence this winter if the ground isn't too frozen. It'll be this spring at the latest that they'll get, working on that. We do have a couple of City of Clayton community events to talk about. We have Sweet Clayton Clean. We have them scheduled for Saturday, May 17th, from 8:00 a.m. to noon at 200 Woolery Lane. That's Fire Station 83. And then also, again, on October 18th, from 8:00 to noon in the same location. And then we're also bringing back the shredding event for Saturday, July 19th, 2025, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 here at this building. We do have our patrol officer wage reopener. The date for the patrol officer wage reopener fact finding is set for January 22nd, so hopefully we'll have something at the beginning of February for council to consider. We are under, working on the website update. The city has been made aware of a few federal, a new federal law under Title II of the Americans with Disabilities Act to ensure the accessibility of web content and mobile applications for people with disabilities. The rule, the final rule clarifies the obligations of state and local governments to make their websites and mobile applications accessible. These upstate, updates must be completed by 2027, and the City of Clayton has reached out to multiple companies to gauge pricing and process to complete the work. Staff engaged Moncito, which interfaces well with our hosted site on Civic Plus, and the tentative timeline is spelled out there below. We had our kickoff here in January, and we hope to have everything completed by November of '26 for the April 1st, '27, or 2027 DOJ deadline. We were made aware, so this is concerning the Old Village. The city was made aware of 29 parcels in the Old Village that abut Clay Township that were still paying property taxes to Clay Township for fire protection. Staff has worked with the county and Board of Elections to remedy this. Documentation was sent to the BOE on January 3rd, showing that the 29 parcels were legally part of the City of Clayton with the merger vote in 1996. The staff requested that, staff request that this can be an administrative fix on the part of the BOE, and there will be no need for legal action. Public records, Governor Dewine signed legislation that would allow law enforcement agencies in Ohio to charge records requesters for processing video that is public record. The law applies to footage from police officers' dashboards and dashboard cameras, as well as surveillance videos from inside jails, which we do not have. Agencies can charge up to $750 per video that is reviewed. The Records Commission met this afternoon and actually passed that or voted in favor of that, and that will come before council. The law doesn't go in effect until April 2nd. There is an open spot on the Board of Zoning Appeals, as we just spoke about. We received notes from Mr. Johnson that he will be vacating his seat. The staff has advertised the position through mid-February, and we will bring candidates to council for consideration. And then lastly, just to address the snow and ice event, the first snow and ice event we had of this year in January cost the city $59,572, and that is broken down. So for salt, we spent $25,500, and brine was $1,105.20, and then equipment was another $20,000, and then cost for employees was around $12,000. And then the event that we had just the other day on the 10th, the total cost was $43,871. We do have an open seat on the JED Board, well, actually, two need to be reappointed. Mayor Stevens' term has expired. He can be reappointed. Mr. Schweitzer was our other representative, but he is termed. You can only serve two terms on the board. In the thought of continuing to have a staff member on there, I volunteer to serve Mr. Schweitzer's place. He will still attend the meetings. He has that wealth of knowledge, but he cannot be the representative of the board. So I will have legislation for you at the next meeting for those appointments, unless, and council can always make the decision to appoint whomever. I know that it's early, but lastly, we have the summer schedule coming up, and this is just for planning purposes. City council has traditionally adopted a summer schedule for 2024. The council opted to cancel the first meeting in June, July, and August for 2025. The meeting falls on June 5th, July 3rd, and August 7th. I would recommend that if council decides to hold just one meeting a month for the month of, for those months, for June of 2025, council hold the first meeting in June on the 5th and cancel the second on the 19th, which is a holiday observed by the City of Clayton for Juneteenth. And the others, I would recommend that we go ahead and continue to cancel the first meeting of the month.
And I had asked the city manager to put that on there, as other government agencies are planning to be closed on that Friday, June 19th. I wanted to give staff the opportunity to plan accordingly.
Anybody have any issues with that, what Amanda said on those dates?
Okay, so we can just plan for that. Okay. Do you want him to do a motion for the summer? Yeah, please.
I'll move for approval for that summer.
Don't we need to vote? I mean, don't we need to have?
A second.
I'll move for approval of the anticipated summer schedule, and it can be amended if the city manager believes we need to have another meeting during another week during the months of June, July, and August.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been properly motioned and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, it's unanimous.
And then the last thing I have for you, the Taste of Northmont is back at Meadow Brcket, Clayton. It is the Taste of Northmont and the Business Expo. It'll be held February 13th, 2025. And when I get more information from the chamber, I will pass that along to council. And that is all I have for you.
Any questions or comments for the city manager?
Just that all parks events are back in motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
I do have one last item for you this evening, Mayor and Council. Actually, I'll turn it over to Law Director Dillon.
Well, the city manager, actually, I had sent an email up to council with information on this with regard to a liquor license application that was submitted. Let me get my notes. The name of the organization is SIPs. And do you have the address for that, Amanda, right off? 6556 Union. I provided council information with respect to that. Council has the ability, if it wishes, to request a hearing for that application, and the city manager is recommending that council take a voice vote to request a hearing on that particular application.
Everyone familiar with what we're talking about?
Yes. I move, we have a hearing regarding the liquor application.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Merkel to request a hearing, second by Mr. Farmer. A voice vote, please.
Farmer?
Yes.
Henning?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Bachman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes. Okay. Anything, not yet. Anything else? I know you're getting antsy. Anything else?
That's all I have this evening.
Anything else for the city manager? Visitors' comments? Any visitors want to make a comment?
As a property owner in Clayton, I would, I guess I would like to understand the reasoning for the rejection, because there's no kind of discussion on modifications or anything. So, and I think we follow the land use plan. We follow the zoning code and overlay district. I know our attorney, Alan, will have a couple of questions following me, so you don't have to answer now. You can answer during your council, but I think, yeah, there's no discussion or justification for rejection, so.
It just sounds like you've got a lot of problems up there that you haven't addressed yet with all the rock, number one, and the retention basis, number two. If they're that big of a problem in that area, I mean, that we already know about.
It's a preliminary planning here. And we already did the geotech report, and we understand what we're getting into, and we're putting the ponds where there's, we won't be hitting the rock and detention and, you know, non-retention ponds where we're not.
So if we approve it and y'all put in another thousand hours, and then we just, then we turn it down, then how does that, good? I don't understand.
Well, this is just a preliminary plan. It's not a final plan.
Okay.
And as a landowner, we do have property rights that we have to follow the zoning code and the land use plan and so.
Because I dealt with a rock before in a subdivision close by here and know what kind of a problem it can be. That was a few years back, but rock is still a rock. It hadn't changed.
Not putting basements in.
Clayton's famous for the rock underneath their...
Alan, if you...
You state your name and...
Alan Schaefer, Law Firm Pickwell Schaefer, Nably, downtown Dayton. I do not live in Clayton. I live south of town. I've been in the business of, well, doesn't matter. Let me go to you, Tim. I believe you asked the city attorney whether or not if you would act on this preliminary at the final, you do get a second bite at the apple at the final? I believe that was your question?
What?
Your question to the city attorney was, if you approve the preliminary tonight, would you get, would you get another bite at the apple at the final? The city attorney's answer was no.
No.
Well, then, could I get a clarification?
I don't believe that was what he was asking me.
I just, you just sent him, you said, the reason he asked the question, the question was, is if, if you approve a preliminary tonight, does he get another bite at the apple at the final? If that's not what he said, then let's get a clarification, because that's what I heard.
That's not what I heard. Look, I understood the question was something different. I understood the question was, if it was rejected, could they vote on it again tonight? That was what I understood.
He asked the question before they voted.
I'm sorry. Mr. Gorman directed his question to me.
Sorry.
And, no, he directed the question to me, and he asked if they vote tonight, if they would vote on it again, and I told him yes, that they would, that if they were to vote on it tonight, they would vote on it again at the next meeting, and at the next meeting, that it were to pass, it would then go or come back before council again for a final. And then Barb corrected me and said, he goes to planning commission first and then back to council, and I said she's correct.
Yeah. And so if it were approved tonight, then Mr. Gorman and this whole council would have another bite at the apple. So for instance, in this rock issue, okay, if the drainage issue, if the drainage issue comes back after they do their, their final, final studies on drainage, and it's got to change, that's going to change at the final plan, and the preliminary is going to change in order to adopt. If the traffic report comes back and says, hey, you need, you needed four outlets on Sweet Potato Road instead of three, but otherwise it works, they're going to have to change the plan. And, and if I heard it correctly, before the vote was taken, Tim asked if he got a second bite at the apple, and the answer was no. The answer from you, Ms. Dillon, was no.
I don't believe that was the question, and I don't believe that's what I said.
Did you not say that?
No.
What did you say?
She just said, he asked her the question, and she answered it.
And you said, you do not get another bite at the apple. You said, you do not get another bite at the apple.
Can I?
You know, this is, this is a big issue. I mean...
I'm not saying this now.
This council, this council really ought to revote on this issue if there's a problem, because if Mr. Gorman's voting based upon the fact that he does not get another bite at the apple, that's, that's not correct. That's not correct. Now, you know...
Is the timer on right now? Because does the timer apply to this?
So I, I think where the confusion lies, if I'm remembering this meeting that we all just, this very long meeting we just sat through, the council took a vote to reject planning commission's recommendation.
To accept it, and they rejected it.
I thought the motion was to, the motion was to reject.
Adopt.
The motion was to adopt.
Adopt.
I, I'm sorry. I was reading the first one. So the council voted, voted four to three. Mrs. Kelly asked if they were able to then modify it, and Ms. Dillon then said no, because they had already voted.
Well, suppose the minutes support...
The meetings are, yeah, the meetings are...
Suppose, suppose, do we get verbatim minutes?
No, it's recorded.
But the meetings are recorded.
That's a recorded.
They're recorded.
Posted tomorrow morning.
Okay. And suppose I'm correct.
Pathetic, because I don't think what you're asking is correct, because I don't think what you're saying is correct. I think Amanda just correctly indicated what happened.
Mr. Gorman's question came before the vote was taken.
Not to me. He asked her a question, and she answered it.
So did you. So did you. You also said no.
I don't believe so. I remember answering.
The, the meeting is recorded, so we'll...
This, this is, this could be a big, big issue.
Yeah. Well, I understand, but we're not in a court of law, so...
Who's our official parletarian? You'd be you, Martina, right?
The media's gonna, the minutes will reflect what happened. It's all recorded.
So no matter what Amanda says, it doesn't matter. She's not a voting member. She's the city manager. You're the parletarian, so you make sure what is being done is correct.
Correct.
So...
See any flaw in it. So...
Anything else?
I think so.
Okay, thank you. Any other visitors? Want to speak? Okay, we'll move to council. Ms. Farmer, we'll start with you.
Well, welcome to 2025. I don't have a lot to say tonight. Long meeting, very, what a barn burner, tell you what. I do find myself reflecting on 2025 and my professional life. 25 years ago, I'm working seminar war games, thinking about what's the year 2025 going to be like. And we had experts from around the airforest, DOD industry, and they all told us about what they thought it was going to be like. Well, guess what? Most of those predictions happened by 2010. And the real trick to some of these things is when you're thinking about the future, about what's next, it's not what's next, it's then what after that. And that's where the imagination can go wild. And that was some of my, that was definitely some of my concern tonight about second order effects from, from what we do as a city going forward. Certainly can be addressed and probably will, but just want to wish all of you a happy Martin Luther King Day next Monday. Very inspiring man. Probably get back and read some of what he said, just to get some new motivation. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Henning?
I hope you all had a nice and healthy holiday season. I hope everybody has a healthy 2025. I do want to thank Governor Dewine today for announcing that the flags will fly full staff on Monday for the inauguration, and then back to half staff for the remaining days to honor President Carter. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gorman?
Yeah, and over the holidays, I had the pleasure of talking to both of our past city managers, and they're both doing well. And that's that I wish everybody here the best of 2025. and they're both doing well, and asked that I wish everybody here the best of 2025. And I, just this week again, spoke to Mr. Rollins, who is a citizen of Willow View, California, and the city manager there, who had just moved to another city, and he and his wife have lived, or temporarily living in the other city, and their house is okay, and it's not burnt down, they've had no trouble at all. So that's good news for Dave.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Merkel?
Nothing to add.
Ms. Kelly?
Nothing to add.
Mr. Bachman?
Evening, everyone. Hope everyone had a great holiday, and looking at things here, good to see, you know, our events coming back on the calendar. Tonight, I voted the way that, like I always do, what I thought was best for the community, listened to everything, looked at, you know, all the information given to me, asked the questions that needed to be, and, you know, it's, you know, we'll see what, what comes of this in the future. So, yeah, look forward to, you know, if any future plans do come from anyone here. Do want to address one thing here, and I should have brought this up about a year and a half ago. There was no official, anything from the city, that there would be no development north of US forty. That is officially by the city. Nothing was done. That was never done. That was, Tim?
Now, I was on the commission then, Brandon.
Was that officially done by the city? Was that officially done by the city?
It was not an official, there was no city at that point in time, it was still township. We were trying to become.
Yeah. These are political promises made three decades ago. We are not bound by that. Now, I take into consideration the history and things around here, but this idea, this statement of broken promises is completely false. We are, there has been, there's nothing, it was checked a few years ago. You know, there, there was no legal promise of, of anything. So that needed to be cleared up. I'm not the only one up here feels that way, but someone finally need to actually say something about it, so. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. And I don't think I have anything else to add in my comments. Again, I want to thank everyone that came out tonight, especially our neighbors, you know, from Inglewood. Other cities came here, and although, you know, both, both of, you know, my votes, you know, got, got put down. I strongly feel I voted the way I should have voted as the mayor and as a resident, and everyone has different ideas what we want for our cities. And like I said, people coming from other cities, it does show that they care about it, about what goes on in our communities. And I think as, I think Mr. Byas back there said it the best, as long as we, we're going to have division, as long as we have these three cities, that's not something we're going to fix today. I hope someone fixes it someday, and we, and we can have a better, a good growth plan for our communities. But I'm personally very disappointed in the votes tonight, but again, I'm one vote of seven. I'm not the king of the world, and I just, again, we'll just, you know, take one step at a time here. So I want, again, I want to thank everybody for the hard work and, and coming out tonight, so. Mr. Gorman?
I, I agree. I think we should have one city called Northmont, and we, everybody goes to Northmont High, Northmont Schools, so I, I agree with that, Mayor. I'm a move for adjournment.
Second.
Motion's been made for adjournment, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.